All right, you guys are live on TV.
Wow, how live we are.
Channel 192.
Okay.
Get some water later.
Oh, thank you, Jerry.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, thank you, Tribe Board meeting. And so tonight, we have with us representatives from the school committee, at least one, as well as the finance committee, full complement of the select board. So, first order of business on the, couple of things we've wanted to talk about tonight, and then obviously, anything else that folks want to bring to the table. Is a discussion of the priorities for all three committees as we move forward, particularly to the Fall Town Meeting. And then, the finance committee liaison assignments, talk through those as well. And again, if there's anything else that Paul for the school committee, is there anything else you wanted to add to the agenda tonight?
No, that sounds good.
Okay, all right. So, at our select board meeting last week, we had some conversation with the finance committee. And we've kind of collectively put together a list of goals and objectives, kind of areas of focuses. We all know there's so much to do in so little time, so we wanted to try to hone in on some initiatives that we would like to get going, and then other things that we would like to bring to closure. So, according to my notes, anyway, some of the things that we talked about, and this is not in any particular order, was the chartering of the town itself. Right now, we have the most basic form of government that's created by Mass General Law. We have an open town meeting, we have a select board, and we have a town administrator position that really does not, by law, at any rate, by law, does not have, truly, an administrator. They don't have hiring and firing authority or anything like that, although in some towns, various duties have been delegated. So, there was no foregone conclusion about the outcome, or a hard recommendation to do anything, other than it seemed that there was general support to at least start looking at options. And, you know, may determine that what we're doing right now makes the most sense for the town of Hadley, or maybe there needs to be a little bit of tweaking or movement towards a town manager type form of government. So, at any rate, that was one item that was discussed, and the thought was that perhaps we can put together a subcommittee to do the research on that. The capital planning was also brought up as an area of focus. Obviously, we have very significant projects going on. We have some significant asks in front of the CPA committee, and talking about, you know, not just the capital planning, which is really identifying the priorities, short, medium, and long term, and then also the various funding that might be available to go along with that. Information technology and human resources, both areas that we really, you know, we don't have the personnel certainly in those types of focused functions, but everybody has collectively identified that as an area of significant need, for the benefit of our municipal employees, to promote efficiency, fairness, equity, all of the things that go around with human resources, but, you know, trying to help people get their jobs done without the distractions of connectivity that's not working, or personnel issues that keep popping up, because we don't have an HR function. We also talked about the ambulance decision. Everybody knows that we've had, like, a working group that's been addressing, you know, our current situation. We have a contract with the town of Amherst. We're coming up on the point where we need to provide Amherst with notice if we're even going to think about going out to bid, or looking at other options. So, that's actually on our agenda this evening, but the conversation, I think, last week was, the outcome of that is going to be crucial, because it may or may not impact the fire substation staffing and costs going forward. We also talked about the DPW, and I think this was in the context, kind of as a subline against the capital planning, you know, coming up with a, we haven't really had much conversation at all about the DPW buildings, which are actual trailers, and wrapping that into the capital planning in a more focused way. There was a suggestion for changing the format, altering the format of the all boards meeting that we started last year, and just wanted to have more conversation about that. And we also talked about volunteers being a priority, the fact that we've had so much difficulty retaining and attracting volunteers that are so necessary to the running of the town. Great example being the school committee this year. I mean, the idea that somebody, and I'm sure he's a fine fellow, but I mean, you know, the idea that we've become to a point where nobody would run for a school committee elected position is just kind of astounding, really. And then, we also talked about education around split tax rate and other things that kind of weave in and out of our conversation over the years, and making sure that we aren't just kind of rubber stamping some of these things year after year, and maybe it's time to get somebody in to, again, have a very thoughtful discussion, not presuming an outcome, but make sure that that happens. So, that's from my notes, these aren't minutes. I'm sure Jennifer will be able to, you know, once she gets to preparing the minutes. But, for those who were here last week, is that generally?
I missed last week. Was there talk of the fire department personnel, or was that in personnel?
No, it was actually in the, you're right, in the context of the ambulance discussion, that wrapped into the fire personnel as well. So, Paul, and not to put you on the spot at all, but clearly, the schools weren't represented at our meeting last week, so, you know, I think we'd like some feedback from, you know, offer the opportunity for the schools to provide feedback as well, because there may be some things that you all are working on, that we should probably know about, or there may be some things on here, certainly the schools have always been at the table for the capital planning.
Right.
And then, there was some initial dialogue with, at least Annie, at the last tribe board meeting, about maybe looking at some shared services as well.
Yeah, I don't think, Molly, any of those conversations are far enough along, so maybe if, what I can do is take it back, I know we've got a meeting tomorrow, the school board committee, so I can bring this up, if there's specific things I can ask. When would you all be meeting next?
We'll be meeting in two weeks.
July 12th is the next select board meeting.
Oh, three, okay.
And would that be, is that sufficient for you, if we can get back to those questions and to you then?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you did mention, the one thing I knew that was, is on our capital campaign that we're engaging CPA with is the athletic fields.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And that's, we just submitted a proposal to CPA just this week on that.
Okay. And when is CPA meeting next, you know?
We're not quite sure. CPA used to be on a second Monday in August schedule. I did talk to Andy Morris Freeman, who's the new chair of CPA, and told him that that probably is not going to work, given how fast the warren is going to have to turn around. So, they haven't set a date, but we can follow up and make sure that they do.
So, my memory also suggests, from last week, that we talked about coming up with a game plan, and how we're going to attack all of these things, you know, collectively. So, I'm wondering if maybe we can kind of take these things, one by one, and talk about what steps we think are necessary to move towards some sort of resolution, conclusion, strategic plan for each of these areas. And I don't think it needs to be finalized tonight, but if, at least if we could get the conversation going collectively, I think that would be good. And then, the other thing that we talked about was having these, these items would then become standing, bulleted agenda items on every select board meeting from here on out, maybe the finance committee as well, but certainly, just to make sure that we're reporting on progress, or if there are updates to provide, that we don't, you know, let these things drop off, if we're all saying that they're that important.
I don't know if the charter is that important to me, I don't know how everybody else feels, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that. I like our form of government, the way it is, if people want to talk about it, I'm more than willing to talk about it, but I don't see that as being a priority on the list that you have in front of you. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I didn't either, at this point. There's other things that I think more important than that, too.
Yeah. And it was actually, the finance committee opened with that at the meeting last week. And I happen to agree with the finance committee, but do you guys want to speak to that?
Yeah, I was actually curious, any more education on it, but how much, the way our charter is written, do we have flexibility to either empower our town administrator, or create more kind of lateral power structure in our government? How much can we do on ourselves, by ourselves, without going to the town?
Virtually nothing, right? If you're going to change your charter, you have to go to the town and request the change.
No, there's some authority that the select board can delegate within the current charter, but that's exactly the type of question that would be on the table. I mean, imagining it as a spectrum, so there's what we have now, and then there's, you know, city council with the mayor, I mean, I would imagine is probably the other extreme. But, maybe we should talk about why this evening came up at all? I mean, and as I said, from my standpoint, the reason I was interested in talking about it is, we've heard David say repeatedly that, and I think we've had a fair number of frankly complaints from town personnel, that sometimes it's very difficult to get a decision made on something, that there's no, there aren't always crystal clear lines of authority on some things. And, what was you said, you actually said it in a quite lovely way last week, about when you're trying to get something done, it's amazing how many...
Oh, what I said was, no one person has the power to get anything done, but everybody has enough negative legislative energy to be able to prevent anything from getting done, something along those lines.
Right. So, I think a lot of the frustration that happens with the staff is because the organization itself isn't clearly laid out, or sometimes decisions need to be made in a more timely manner than having a select board meeting every couple of weeks with, you know...
As yahoos.
Well, we have three weeks before our next select board meeting, so it's a good time to make mention of that. I mean, it's three weeks before our next meeting, if a decision needs to be made in advance of that.
I agree with Joyce and Jerry at this point. Our problem is, we talk about it and talk about it, just like you're talking about tonight. Put it in front of the board, take a vote on it, and that's it, that's the end of it. I mean, most of us can make a decision on the board, one way or the other, in the direction we should be going.
So, I think the suggestion was, and Terry's not here, Terry was the one who really spoke to this last week from the finance committee, the suggestion was, maybe it would be worthwhile, again, for people who are interested, to do some work off to the side, you know, the formal subcommittee that with representation from the, you know, schools if you're interested, if not, it's not mandatory, maybe some folks in town who don't have any axe to grind, so to speak, because they don't, you know, they're not a municipal employee, they're not a volunteer, so kind of some at-large people, just to research the different types of government, because I think sometimes we just kind of bump along without knowing what possibilities there are. I know, I have, you know, we all talk to other selectmen, and we go to meetings at the state level, and we hear of other towns doing things, but I would just like to be more educated.
I don't have a problem researching, but I just said, you've got three people on the board here right now that said this is the least of our problems, and you continue talking, Ms. Chairman. This is exactly what the problem is with this board.
You know, maybe another way to handle this is to get some professional people in from Mass Municipal Association, that deal with this all the time, a small community, trying to change the type of government they have, and results, how they've done these things.
Yeah.
And he could give us the professional answers to all of our questions, and then after maybe having somebody like that in, then maybe we could form a committee or something, if we feel that's the direction we would want to go.
So, does everybody remember we had the two folks in?
I just want to finish, you know, just what I said, we started out with an HR person that we all kind of agreed on, or some kind of accountant, or financial expert, and we all kind of agreed on that. And it seems like the finance committee and our board did agree on that.
Mm-hmm.
And now, you're going off in a little bit different direction.
No, we haven't gotten to IT and HR yet, John. We're just sticking with the first suggestion.
No, I know, but this is, that's where we started this whole conversation.
So, just on the finance committee, we were going, when we were reviewing these things, such as the HR, and it was organizational chart as a whole.
Yes.
So, we felt like this was part of the organizational chart as a whole. And so, we thought the whole thing should be done together, you know, and one would affect the other. So, I mean, if you're going to look, you know, we're looking at these types of things, so we thought that if you're going to look at the finance person, and you're looking at all these other things, that we should just do it as, you know, the one time, get it over and done with, you don't want to be making changes over and over to the organizational chart.
And do you think this would be a single person, or three single people?
I didn't know...
And where are we going to fund it from?
Well, I didn't have enough information to make a decision at that point regarding how it would work, but I was just saying, of importance, we have a lot of, we put it to the top, because we said, we all need, we all noticed that we do need an HR person, we do need some of these things, and so, let's look at the whole organizational chart.
Now, these are new positions. Is everybody of the same opinion that we still want to provide personnel for the fire department? When we left the 18, we could only find one, and we wanted to try to give them three. Is that still everybody's priority, one item? I know it is in my mind.
The public safety is probably a top priority for us, that's what we think. We think the safety is huge. However you work the safety, we think that should be looked at. And, so, yes, whether it be how we're going to do that, but, you know, how many people we can offer, and at this point, it's only one, but it is a top priority.
Everything on that list is a priority.
Absolutely.
In my mind, you know, everybody looked at it. We're in unison in a lot of areas, and I think that's where we should concentrate, you know, where the finance committee, the board, and the school all agree, you know, and there's no easy answers either, and I'll finish with that comment. It's going to really be tough, you know, 2019 is really going to be a tough budget to try to deal with. There's no question about it.
So, just going back to, again, when we're talking about the organization discussion, this actually started when we invited in the folks from the town of Franklin and...
Foxborough and Crafton.
And it was out there somewhere, okay. And if everybody remembers, we had those two gentlemen in front of us, and they talked about a lot of the things that they had seen and gone through, and that evening, actually, the select board, if I remember correctly, had a very positive reaction to that discussion, as did the folks around the finance committee at that point. So, this to me isn't just, this is a logical extension of what we already started, and the question was, without spending any money, was anybody interested in at least breaking off and doing some research on what the possibilities were? And one of the things I would caution against, too, is anytime you're talking about governance, whether you're in municipal government, or private industry, or whatever, everybody gets all knotted up about it, because they start jumping to a conclusion of, oh, they're taking away town meeting, oh, we're going to make David Nixon the king, and here's your scepter and crown, and he's going to control the town. I mean, we're just talking about getting information right now, and I think it would be irresponsible to not at least get the information before we even start a formal conversation about changing anything. So, that's, I'm sorry, John, that's why I do keep bringing it up, I think we need to do the research.
Well, I know, you're still talking about it, and you still have three people that has it on the bottom of their list, sitting on this board.
And if you are noticing, this is a tribe board meeting, John, and there's a reason we have these.
I don't hear any input from the other boards, just from you.
Oh, you heard the finance committee. What are they, what are you, you're on the board?
I'm on the board. Despite the time that we're taking on this, it doesn't seem like anyone's opposed to getting more information, and no one said anything against specifically the idea of a subcommittee. So, I would just put that forward.
I mean, I would be in favor of a subcommittee to just figure out what's going on.
Absolutely, and we just... But I think what you're looking at, the bottom line is, is to, to be able to give David different authority, and in order to do that, you have to look outside the scope of what our charter is right now.
Right.
Because within what we have, he can't do what, whatever, you know, unless we direct him to do that, where time lapses, and you're not able to make any other decisions. So, I think that's the bottom line. And certainly, if people want to look into that aspect of how we can circumvent that, you know, I'm in favor of that, too.
Well, we can, oh, David.
So, the conversation seems to focus in on this position and on me. Think about the overall organization, and how horizontal it is. If you want efficiency, if you want effectiveness, if you want decision-making that sticks, think about the organization, not, don't think about me, don't think about my position.
It's the pyramid.
It's the organization.
It's the organization, but it's also a pyramid at some point.
Where you have certain levels of power, of authority.
Because, for example, one of the things that has nothing to do with the town administrator that I'd be interested in is, again, if we identify what some of our issues are, which is maybe, maybe, sometimes the decision-making is not as streamlined as we would like it to be, how have other towns addressed that? They may have addressed it completely and utterly outside the definition of, I mean, they may still be a Massachusetts general law town, with a select board and a town administrator and all of that, but maybe they've figured out other ways to get it done. So, I mean, really, a lot of this is about best practices, in my mind.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
So, do we, do you want to appoint a subcommittee to sort of take the ropes on that?
Well, again, it's a tribe board, so, I mean, let's specifically ask, is anybody against the formation of a subcommittee just to do data gathering?
I'm not against it, but I think we should talk about a lot of the other things that are on your list there, and that we should work towards prioritizing. I think that all of us are busy people, as Terry said last week, and that we have a finite amount of time in our lives to go to meetings. And if we can help prioritize some of the things and get some of these things off our list, whether it's ambulance committees, and what a staffing is going to be for the fire department, I think I would rather prioritize that stuff, and then come back to the things that are more kind of a philosophy process. So, I know a lot of people, I know John doesn't have a lot of extra time available to be on subcommittees and things like that. So, I don't know how, like I said, I follow the rest of the boards, but I mean, I think that's what everybody's thinking here, that we should kind of identify the seven items that we have there, and target the ones that are the low hanging fruit, get some of this stuff done, so that we can go forward with it, and then come back and address it all.
Okay, so why don't, yeah, so why don't, we'll leave it right there at the moment, and then at the end, we can recap, and then if people, if we have formed four other subcommittees, and people still have an appetite to talk about this, if it's deemed to be a lower priority, then that's the issue for people to manage their time. How's that?
Yes, that's what I would like to do, if that's...
Yeah, okay.
The will of the board.
All right, so next, we have capital planning, and then I would wrap, just wrap the DPW trailers as a subset of that.
Okay.
Okay? So, capital planning, Jerry, you're on the current...
I am, and I know that there's going to be some recommendations coming forth from the municipal buildings committee, at kind of identifying how to go forward with that, and I think we're going to have some talk with our treasurer regarding funding mechanisms, and when money would be available, that we could come before the town. There's been a recommendation as to possibly replace the trailers that we have down there for a short five-year project, a five-year, in which, you know, we're not making it a lot better there, but we are making it better, and safer, and providing a better environment for the people to be down there, while not biting off another building, which we're, you know, trying to get two, at least two, possibly three, up and running this year. It's just, you know, we can't do everything at once, and I think that's the way that that is going to try to progress and go forward with that. I think we're going to be talking a little bit about that a little later, when we have some of the representatives from that committee that's coming in. So, if that's, you know, there's some information that's on the table, I know you guys are interested in getting that accomplished as well, and I think we're working in that direction, towards getting that done. We'll see how we can fund it, and where we'll be with that.
So, do people think that there's any, any changes needed to the capital planning process itself? I mean, so right now, we have a capital planning committee, we have representation from the community, we have a school representative, finance committee, select board, right? David?
So, when we originally proposed the capital planning bylaw to the town meeting, there were two floor amendments that, you know, we don't have to act on tonight, but we should be aware of. There were two floor amendments in order to exempt entities away from the capital planning process. The first floor amendment was exempted any CPA articles from capital planning overview, and the school committee submitted an exemption from any school project that is internal to the school from capital oversight. So, in that way, we have a process that looks at all the capital plans, all the capital projects, except for these two particular areas.
So, it's always been funded via the meals tax?
And borrowing and other...
And borrowing and other cash reserves.
Well, before we had meals tax.
Right? A lot of, a lot of things have been fixed and adjusted in the last few years. We've got a lot of new equipment, we've got air conditioners going into the school, we got no air conditioning units going here and over next door. We have brand-new buildings, roofs that we've been putting on over the last few years, and I think David has asked all the different departments to resubmit a new updated list of their priorities, and once we get a copy of that, I'm glad to say that the municipal buildings committee has a short list now, and we gave them direction last week to go back and to relook at what they think that those lists should look like. They're a little bit perplexed, because they're not sure where the buildings are going with what's going on with that, but we're prioritizing for the buildings that we know are going to be here for a while. So, I think it's, I think I've got great news to say, we've spent a lot of money, a lot of things have been done, a lot of roofs have been done. DPW has a lot of brand-new equipment, the school's got air conditioners, and like I said, we've adjusted some of the things to take care of, the safety complex has had a lot of work done to it over, the town hall has had a lot of work done to it. There's a lot of good things going on with that department, and we assume this year we're going to be getting the meals tax in there again. We'll get the new priorities from the different departments, and we'll see what we can do to continue to fund those projects.
Money, money well spent that we didn't used to have.
Yeah, the school's very thankful, the kids will be happy there's air conditioners next year.
That's great.
Do you have a number on that field project that you want the CPA for?
Oh, the fields?
Yeah.
Yeah, John, we just submitted, I think it was 400,000. So, we haven't had a chance to...
It's going to be in stages or steps?
Correct, right. So, what we did is, CPA was gracious enough to give us a $15,000 planning grant, we hired Brookesure Design, we put together a committee of local folks and school folks, and what they did is they had an older design, and they broke it out into at least two phases.
Okay.
And so, the first one is the fields that are now in agricultural use, to convert those to a multi-use soccer field and a girl's softball.
So, I guess two questions, one for Jerry, and then I've got another one for David, so, and this is just a question. But in terms of actually arriving at a capital plan, is it clear, like, what the final deliverable is, so to speak? It's a kind of a living, breathing document that will be updated as things change, but it will have short, medium, and long term, and prioritized, and all that good stuff?
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely, and the different funding mechanisms based on, you know, what's needed, and what we can do, and how we can fund it, so...
And you just, you just brought up the limitations that were placed at town meeting. I mean, are you, I mean, that was a decade ago now, I think that took place?
I'm a little perplexed, because we funded an air conditioning unit through the school, why is that?
Yeah, can you help me understand that, too?
Yeah.
When you said... When you said
I'm just saying that, that a school project doesn't need to come to capital planning. The bylaw was amended on town meeting floor.
Through their budget, they can fund projects.
They can
Their, their school choice, they can.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't need to, but it can.
Right, right.
It's not excluded from
I'm sorry, I didn't get that, I thought it was like excluded.
That's what I thought, too. Thanks, Jerry.
But I mean, I'm just asking, are you, are you suggesting that we want to address those exclusions?
I think we, I think we should, and it's a peculiarity of the, of the capital Massachusetts general law governing, the adoption of capital plans is that you have to do this for an annual town meeting, we can't do it for the fall town meeting, that kind of amendment. So, we have a year to work on looking at those two issues.
So, it sounds like that would be
What's wrong with the way it is? What, what needs to be adjusted?
I'm just saying that this is, this is how we got our current capital bylaw. If you're okay with it, then I'm, I'm okay with it. If you want to make changes, these are the two areas that I would suggest.
Does anybody have any problems with the current way that it's being done?
No.
No.
You know, I agree with Jerry, a lot has been done in this last year, but that was due to an education process to all the voters in town and voting for nine ballot questions, which was unheard of. I thought maybe three or four would possibly pass, but all nine, and I think the educational process is what sold it, telling them why we're doing this and why we need it and the cost to them. Now, we have to let all that filter down and figure out how much is going to be applied and when, and that's how we're going to have to come up with these figures for two nineteen. All those nine ballot questions, when we implement it, is going to make a difference in the two nineteen budget, a major difference, you know, and
I mean, I think, you know, best practices would be that they, they would be at the table as equal, equal partners. I don't think we've had any issues, and I, and I think at the time, when the, when the school opted out, it was, I think I was more, when I was on finance committee, I was more concerned about it at the time because there was so much school choice money, and they truly could just, you know,
Fund it all.
Fund it all and, and not take prior, the rest of the priorities into account. Sad to say, schools are in a different situation, they don't really have, have that luxury, I'm going to call it, anymore, but it's by, it's by happenstance, but that's the way it is. I think with the CPA, the same, you know, could you envision a time where, what if, you know, there were eight projects that went to CPA? And then CPA approved all of them, I mean, how, you know, and then the capital planning committee hasn't really been able to prioritize those, and they may not even be part of the capital plan, so we wind up spending taxpayer dollars to fund things that we don't even think are a priority.
But that's not on town meeting floor by the taxpayers, and they have every right to do that.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I don't know if that begs a change or not, I'm just thinking out loud right now.
You know, the other thing that I was really pleased about is the finance committee creating liaisons. That hasn't been done for years. So, it breaks out your individuals on the board, and five members don't have to go to one meeting, you can bring the information back. It's going to save a great deal of time for your committee, you know, it was, I was very pleased that you did do that.
I don't know, it looks to me like some of those fellows and ladies and gentlemen on that finance committee just took on an awful big task ahead of them, where they're going to be attending a far greater amount of meetings than they were before.
Two tomorrow.
Yeah.
For example.
Gabriel.
Okay, so in terms of action items then on the capital planning, is there anything other than what we currently have planned?
David, can you remind me when those, when the reports are due or the
Capital planning, it's June thirtieth.
And Paul, are you the appointee to the committee or, or somebody else?
I'm sorry?
Special town meeting articles.
You all haven't opened up the warrant yet, so.
Yeah, but we had a expected close date on that?
Well, it's August. I believe so.
Yeah, so, bringing this up.
That's the close date for the warrant?
Yep.
Do you have a, a sort of rough draft of that yet?
So, do you guys have a planned meeting, Jerry?
Uh, not yet. Not yet. We're going to wait till we get our information available, so that we, we don't have meetings just to have meetings, we have meetings to roll up our sleeves and get information that we can take away from it and then, then come back. Not just a organ.
So, did you actually pick liaison to committees for, since you're all new on the finance committee, did you find that to be the most effective way to get to know all the different budgets in town? Did you find that that was going to be a better resource? Not that you're going to have to stay on it forever, but did you find that it was going to be a good learning experience?
You have to start
Somewhere.
Where the people are, right? And so, you can either have everybody parade through and give a little speech, or you can just attend the meeting to know what's going on on an ongoing sort of basis, which I think you get much better information that way, anyway. So, that actually starts tomorrow, too.
Okay, so, nothing more on the capital planning and DPW priority? Right, we're good to stay the course of what we're doing?
No, I'm very happy with the way it's going, I hope you are as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes, Jerry, I am. Okay, so next thing we had is information technology and human resources.
We got a grant on that, fifty thousand dollars, it's about what half of what we need for the SCADA program to be up and running. The SCADA program, for those who do not know, is an information system that we can tie into the wastewater treatment plant, so that we can hopefully save a lot of overtime and things like that, with people getting called in for alarms and things like that. The SCADA program will be able to tell us what's wrong, where it's wrong, and we're going to be able to communicate with it and hopefully solve a lot of those problems from home.
So, so sticking with IT, David, do you want to give an update on where we're at? So, Northeast IT responded to
Right, so we went out to bid for a server, we received three bids, only one of which was responsive, Northeast IT. Looking at the prices, it looks a little high, but there is also a clear message from Northeast IT is that they would rather have a conversation with us and revisit this in a different way, rather than go through the formal bid process. Not that we're going to be able to avoid that in the, at the future, but they're basically saying, do you know what it is that you're asking for? And, you know, there may be another way to do this that would be more effective. So, we need to reach out to Northeast IT, bring them out, and I just haven't had any time to do it.
The other two bidders feel exactly the same way, based on their bid that you received?
Uh, they, they submitted very minimal information, didn't, didn't seem to really be engaged with the process.
So, I had asked David if, when Northeast IT comes in, and they're the ones, just so you guys know, that we had a, had requested a five-year technology implementation plan, and they were the ones who actually did it, but they could only take it to a certain point because of some scope limitations within the town. So, when I read the cover letter, David showed it to me, I mean, the, it was like, whoop, whoop, like warning, it sounded like, you know, be careful what you ask for, we can deliver what you're asking for, but that may not actually be what, what you need, and I would certainly trust their judgment, given the fact that they were the ones who came in and did all of that planning work. So, you know, again, time permitting, but sooner rather than later, within that few weeks, David, we're going to try to get them on the calendar and at least just have a discussion with them, and then bring that back to the board, say, okay, this is what we learned from Northeast IT, because maybe, you know, there will be a suggestion for a different direction. So, that's where that stands right now, okay? And then the other piece of it, Paul and Tara, was, you know, there was some conversation, I don't think we're at the point yet where we know exactly what resources we need, but when we do, you know, we'd at least like to have a conversation with the schools about that, in case there's an opportunity for any sort of sharing of services.
Or some of those common services ideas that you talked with, with Annie about?
Yeah.
Is that it? Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Did you guys discuss any of that?
We haven't gotten very far.
In the past couple meetings?
No. I'll bring it up tomorrow.
And when David, when we had the meeting with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and they brought South Hadley to the table, again, just from talking to them, it wasn't the topic of the conversation, but it came up that they actually have some interest in sharing arrangements on their information technology as well. And just yesterday, I passed the City of Northampton IT Department sign on Gothic Street, so, I mean, we may want to
Look a little bit further.
Look, yeah, exactly, before we just plow forward with a hire, too, right? Okay.
Does South Hadley have anything to do with HR as well? Internally?
Yeah. The more we peel back the layers of the onion, it didn't really sound like, basically, their, Jennifer Jane's counterpart, who is the assistant to the town administrator and the select board, wears five hats? Just three?
At least, at least.
I don't know, I was, I was losing count.
Too many.
Yeah, not only is that individual the licensing coordinator, but they actually are the, the internal HR person, and then
Procurement.
Procurement, and so, it didn't necessarily, I mean, here we are sitting with our little old town, thinking that we need somebody full-time, I'm, I'm not sure how they're getting all that done in South Hadley, but
Well, that's what I mean, if, if we're looking at three different positions, just like I said, you know, maybe there's somewhere that we can share one of these, these people, you know, throughout the whole town.
Mm-hmm.
I always thought the cog should have grown in this direction.
Yeah, exactly.
Has there been more discussion on that front about regionalizing through the cog with HR IT?
They're really into it now. They're looking for an image and doing more for small communities, and so, there's a whole, I really can't talk about it because it was done in executive session, what they're planning to do.
Stop going into executive session, for God's sake.
I can't.
Every week.
Every single committee has that need.
This is what's happening, you know.
Every single community has that need.
They know they have a real problem with their image.
Yeah.
And they're trying to do a lot of things to correct it, so, there'll be a lot of changes coming down.
And how is their financial stability? Are they stabilizing, or?
Depending on what they do for a couple of situations, it is not good, but they do have some assets, another thing I can't talk about. That's what I said last week, if it gets sold, possibly, I'm not going to say what it is, and, so that's another situation.
We'll, we'll stay tuned for the next episode.
I made a couple of comments about the Franklin County cog, you know, four years ago when they started here, one of your old school committee members got me in on a few of the select meetings that they had up there, and they're, they're really interesting, and they're, they really got, got a good program going on up there through Franklin County right now.
Yeah. Think Hampshire could learn a thing or two.
There's a big difference, though, they can get revenue from their planning department, the cog doesn't have any means of revenue, they were trying to get revenue, taking excess tax from, you know, deeds, and the states had absolutely no way, this was a puzzling thing. We had all the representatives in and senators and everything, and looking for avenues to get relief, and they pulled the plug on everything. So, it's not easy, what, what's confronting the cog, it really isn't.
That's what I was saying, Linda would appreciate the changed language. So, where we last left off with human resources, at least on, on our side of things, was David recently contracted with the Employers Association of New England as a starting point and wrapped in the treasurer's office, so Joan Zuzco and Linda, to start meeting with them to, to, you know, utilize their services to perhaps help us kind of scope, scope this out again before we just kind of plow into a, a hiring, but I, I know that, you know, unions are going to be part of that conversation, and, and David, I mean, you're going to, did you start that conversation with Andy at all, or? About HR?
Yes, yeah.
Does the school have an HR person? Okay.
No. So, again, if it's
Madam Chair, can I backtrack a little bit, back to DPW? Because this is going to be a problematic area, this SM four, Environmental Protection has just put off the whole project for a year, and it may be eternity, it affects two of our buildings, we're building, the amount of money we borrowed at town meeting to get this done, and maybe David could enlighten us a little bit, I know you just had a letter in our mail and everything, but That, you know, it's a big money thing that we're going to be, if it has to continue or it just stops dead, I, you know, I'm totally confused with it right now.
Can, can, just because that, that was like, like a total right turn, so could we just finish the HR discussion and then go right into that?
Sure, that's fine, yeah.
So, anyway, so that, that's, that's what we've, we, you know, I mean, that's what's been done on the, the town side, so, next steps would be further conversation with the Employers Association? Yeah, okay, I just wanted, again, we should add action items on all these things. So, we'll be getting an update through David and Linda on any suggestions or movement on that end, and then you'll be the, in contact with Annie to keep her abreast of? Okay? Okay, how about MS four?
It's just something that just happened, right, Jerry?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if you want to speak to it a little bit, or just let David clarify what has come down just recently and how it's going to affect us.
Town meeting floor, we looked for, what, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars?
Three ninety.
Three ninety.
Yeah.
Three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in, in order to begin the process of complying with MS four, apparently Hadley has polluted the New York Sound, as well as any other river town, uh, community with the sludge and septic that was being dumped into the river, and it came down a few years ago that it, New York Harbor needed to be cleaned up, and we had a portion of that bill that we needed to pay. So, MS four kind of identified what our responsibilities were, and it was a three-part process we were looking at.
Ten-year part.
Ten, ten years.
Ten-year process.
But our first allocation was, and it happened on town meeting floor last year, that we needed to pony up the money to begin the process, to take care of what we need to do on our end. And as of, it was yesterday or the day before, it came out that this was, there's a stay on that right now. We don't know if it's going to continue or not going to continue, but at this point in time, they're looking at that as, in trying to identify as to whether or not the responsibilities of those fall back on the town, or if it's going to be solved a different way. I would venture a guess that our EPA has far less power and authority under our current administrative, than it did in the past, and that might very well be the driving force behind this, but that's, that's the
But I guess the problematic thing all along was, we had it held over our heads, sixteen thousand dollars a day fines if we don't begin implementation by, was it supposed to be July first, seventeenth?
No, we, we need to file a notice of intent by September seventeenth, or if we don't, we would be incurring these daily fines, which would rack up within twenty-five days to be three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or thereabouts, close enough, the original.
And we began the process, and we were complying with every aspect of it, it's now been put on hold.
Yeah, so, ten days before the whole permit was supposed to take place, we, we received this news, we're not entirely sure what it means, we're studying it, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection are co-administrators of the permit, so, just because EPA is withdrawn from the scene doesn't mean that we don't have any obligations under this new requirement. We've done a lot of work, we've invested a lot of time and resources into making sure that not only were we going to comply with the September deadline, but that we were going to comply with all the other hurdles that were coming down the pike. There are a number of grants that we've landed in order to prepare ourselves for this, so, we need a little bit of time to think about how we can best position the town of Hadley strategically to deal with this turn of events. There are a couple of non-negotiables out there, one of which is that the Long Island Sound is not going to get better on its own, so at some point, this is going to come around.
Just the wastewater, this is surface water, drainage, and so on.
The irony is the Deerfield River runs into the Connecticut River, too, and
But, but throughout all of this, Route nine goes right through here, and all the state drains are going to be the town's responsibility also, so there's another issue, you know, between the state and the town of Hadley.
Yeah, so
You know, and I'm sure this is not the only town that has a state highway going through it that has this problem. So, I think the state finally realizes that, you know, they're going to have to take some responsibility for some of this down the road here.
I guess what bothers me is the biggest problem that we're having with the two buildings that are going forward, the sub-fire station and the Alseener Center, is the MS four and how it's affected the drainage of both of those projects and skyrocketed the cost of those projects. So, where are we today to deal with that? That's, this is my main concern, and how are we going to deal with it?
David, you
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going to put it out there, is that we're not admitting that we're polluting anybody, that we actually don't know, but the, all the effluents that we do measure, wastewater and water, et cetera, we, we comply with all the requirements, so, we're not saying that we pollute, we're not saying that we're contributing to the damage to the Long Island Sound, but we are beholden to this, this permit, or we were until the day before yesterday. So, we'll continue to take a look at it. Yes, John, that there are jurisdictional issues, UMass drainage goes right into Hadley, the Mass Highway Drainage System affects Hadley, some of our drainage system affects the Mass Highway layout, so. Uh, the, uh, Mass Highway Drainage System affects Hadley. Some of our drainage system affects the Mass Highway layout, so.
So the drainage must dwarf anything the town does.
But Amherst dump somewhere with Hadley Pond.
Um.
If all the, if all the wastewater from UMass moved into our pocket, so to speak, that's probably ten times what the town loses.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any science on that one.
It goes into their sewer plant in Amherst and then there's an outfall line that goes from the sewer plant into Connecticut River through Hadley. And it was initially a thirty-six inch line and it's been replaced with a forty-eight inch line, so.
That's a lot of throughput.
Well, I'm sure a slow day in the summer, uh, UMass is five million gallons a day.
You know, and they can say what they want and they did a eco-science report years ago, how, um, Lake Warner, North Hadley Pond, whatever you wanna call it, got polluted. And they blamed the farmer's cows and things of that nature, but if you wanted to stand on the bridge and you could see everything coming down, going over the dam and it's quite obvious what happened, but they never owned up to it. Everything was raw going right into the brook, right out of their plant because they couldn't pass it through the line to the river. They just had too much, so.
All right, we got, okay, so, uh, MS four, there's gonna be a game plan. You and Marlo were talking and, and to that point, we do need to wrap that into the building.
Yeah, we need, yeah, this is, this is a fresh development, so we're gonna have to take a little bit of time and think it, think it through.
Okay.
Just gonna ask a question.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, I wasn't here last week, so maybe this has already been discussed, but what of our priority list is actually gonna try and be executed by fall town meeting? Like, are we gonna try and get firemen for fall town meeting? Are we gonna try and get HR for fall or IT or any of those things?
Well, I think that's, that's why we're trying to get as much information as we can on each of these to figure out if that's something that we're gonna be in a position to do. Cause I think we, we all agree that we didn't wanna go to town meeting with something that was half-baked. Um, the one thing, I mean, I, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about fire personnel for fall town meeting.
August second is what, six weeks away and the next board meeting is three weeks away.
But we haven't got, but we haven't gotten our cherry sheet yet either.
Right.
It's on the agenda for this evening.
You'd be surprised what gets done in August.
Well, yeah, I'm trying to stop everything getting done the night before.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's why we're trying to have action items on these things.
Sometimes that's the way it goes. When you, when you know what your money is and you don't know until then, so.
But so to that point, um, so fire personnel and then the ambulance decision, I think we agreed last week that knowing what direction we're heading in with the ambulance is gonna be critical to the long-range plan for the fire department. So, um, tonight, actually, the ambulance, uh, work group is on the agenda at seven fifteen. So, um, they'll be making their report and laying out what they think that the next steps are. Um, so that, that is moving along. And I believe the, how close is the, the fire chief? Um, it was approved for one additional personnel starting July one.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, maybe we can get an update from him tonight where he stands on.
Oh, he's coming tonight?
Yeah, yeah, he'll be here tonight. Because, um, we have the report from the ambulance work group, um, then we go right into the fire substation update. And so it seemed like a good time to talk about that.
And that's all indicative on what's happening with our free cash coming into the fall. How much money's actually gonna be there to distribute out? And if we don't have the dollar figures that we're anticipating, then we're in big trouble with two eighteen, never mind two nineteen.
Okay, um, so volunteers is another priority, uh, that was brought up. Does anybody have any thoughts on what sort of action items we could, should have relative to attracting and retaining volunteers?
So could you clarify this a little more? Cause I remember there were a couple of different conversations, volunteers referencing all boards and committee volunteers? I remember Terry had gone on a bit about that. Or volunteers in addition outside of boards and committees to attract and do, essentially looking at the structure of our boards and committees and how we incentivize or just attraction or retention?
Um, that's a good question. I mean, I, I think the one, one could fall under that organizational discussion. Um, so, and then maybe this other one is just, how, how do we develop a feeder system or, or whatever? I mean, should we be doing more with the schools to make people more aware of the joy of working in a municipal government, you know, about how things work, you know?
The way I would do, the way I would do is try to identify what we ask for holes right now and what we need for volunteers to fill the boards and the committees that we currently have. I think that's the priority with us. And then at that point in time, then we look for feeder, you know, and ways for, to, to help utilize and, and put altern, alternates on committees and things like that, so that, that we're able to help, you know, along with that.
You know, before I was involved with all this finance committee, I never had really any idea, like, you know, you said that there was an opening on school committee and the person ran on the right end and won three votes. Well, when that person, whoever would put in papers for running for that particular office, how do people know that that's even available? Like, who, you know, what's, what's, you know, how do they know that they should even run, you know, for example, like that, that spot's gonna be open? Cause I didn't know.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I, and again, I think maybe, maybe focusing on this area, w- w- we should, to Jerry's point, take, take a holistic look at, at how we're doing things today. Then there's an immediate issue of, do we have ongoing vacancies and how do we try to go about filling them? And Donald, I think you were the one that really, I wrote down like who brought these things up, so I have Donald in perens here. Um, did you have some thoughts on this when you brought it up or?
Well, I don't think Hadley media is working. You know, they're putting it on these positions and if you have cable, you see it possibly if.
If you're watching.
If you take time to watch it, you know, and, uh, they, we do, uh, you have reporters here occasionally and they'll write a story on elected officials that are opening for the election.
Mm-hmm.
But lately, we don't even get a reporter here anymore. We used to have them all the time. Now they've got one reporter that shared with five or six towns. And they're just so thin over the gazette. It's like every other place, you know, they just don't have the money to allot the reporters to cover local stories and.
I mean, we're, we concentrate a lot on our local access, but I think we should go out of our way a little bit more to go to, to, to the local newspapers, the Amherst Bulletin, the Gazette, you know, even the union, you know.
Nobody reads those papers anymore. They go all onto the c- computer.
A lot of people blog and, you know, when you were in Amherst, Larry Kelly would have a blog about the meetings. You didn't have to watch the meetings.
But they don't read the paper anymore.
But still, how do you get people to go and click on that blog?
I think we need to use social media.
Right.
Right. So I'm just gonna say, I don't wanna kick the can, but I could see a proper communication strategy, integrating social media, a website, you know, working with local presses, actually falling under perhaps an IT personnel.
That's true, yeah.
So I, you know, there's a lot to take on. We probably couldn't hire more than one, that's another discussion, but, uh, that's where I'd like to see it go.
I mean, cause at our house, we were free of cable TV and free of satellite TV. We got like three computers per person, but no, you know, no local news like that comes through, so.
David, you wanna say something?
I was just reminded that I was giving a talk to the, one of the local boy scout troops about citizenship and these days citizenship is usually cast in terms of who's in and who's out. Uh, you are or you're not. Um, but I said that there's another way of looking at it. You can think about it as stewardship. And so this may be an interesting tie-in for the schools. I, I was talking to young people, uh, some of them are very young. And yet I was able to say you can volunteer in municipalities for certain things. You can engage with the library, with this, with the council on aging, with the Park and Rec Commission. There are ways for, for young people to make a difference and participate and then they may be interested in carrying forward.
Civics isn't even a common school anymore, which is a shame, by the way.
Exactly. You know, and I brought that out, up a couple of times. I, I did speak to a couple of boy scout groups also. But we had this conversation with the school, not only with the, um, municipal committees, but with water, with wastewater, with some pretty important issues for our community that they, they don't have enough operators for right now.
You mean from a career standpoint?
For, from a career standpoint, you know?
I think it's interesting that, I think, I would say venture, at least I know my kids are much more engaged with what's happening globally than I was at that age.
Yeah.
But not so much locally. So if we could build these inroads of, and I've often, Annie and I have been talking about civics internships, you know, what it means to be engaged in your local community.
Well, we used to have, cause I had gone in on several occasions and spoke to some classes about, uh, career days and I don't even know if they do career day anymore over there. Do they?
I think they do.
They do.
Do they? Yeah. I'm not sure what they bring in, um.
You mean who they bring in?
Who they bring in. What they bring in. Could be what too.
I've been one of those whats before, thank you. But you're right, it hasn't been from the municipal or, or like the public sector. I don't remember them having anybody from.
Fire, do, this fire.
It's been more, you know, fire.
Do you go into the school and talk about firefighting?
We do safe, uh, safe education.
We don't, we, we're in discussions with Annie about doing that though.
But you've, uh, I know that they've had fire personnel at career day before, cause I remember I did it like maybe one or two years, years ago. And I know that there, there was a police officer there and then somebody else from, who was a dad, who was a fireman. Was it you?
Kind of Ben.
Yes, I know. But again, it's, it's kinda focused on that.
It's also the town clerk's responsibility to publish the elected offices and she does a tremendous job at it. But that doesn't help you get people to run for those offices. That's where we're lacking, you know? The information is out there, but everybody has busy lives today. Husband and wives are both working to support their family and to dedicate the time that the finance committee or we do or any board in town. You're giving up a lot of your livelihood, you know?
Talk about that all we want, Donald, but do you go over to your grandfather? You work as hard as your grandfather? Cause I don't. We get a lot of time. It's just getting people to do it. I hear it over and over again about how I have no time, I have no time. Nobody has any time, yet you're nowhere near as busy as your grandpa.
But there's different people that have time for different things. Like if you wanna have a little league coach, there's a ton of them out there.
We need them too.
You know?
We need everybody.
We need everybody, but in municipal government is what's really lacking, you know, and maybe because you're brought to task so often, you know, and it's done publicly on TV and, uh, nobody wants that aggravation anymore.
Well, the good news is.
See, the way he sold it was wrong. You should've said accolade, Donald. People are too shy to take the accolade of being on.
But, but the good news is I'm actually sitting here.
That doesn't happen very often.
Going up and down the table and I'm looking at one, two, three, four brand-new committee members, right? So we've got four first year and you're two years in, three years? Yeah. So the good, I mean, and yeah, so look at, look at all the youth on the other side of the table again.
Thank God.
First of this side.
This side of the table fell down on me.
So maybe, maybe in terms of a, a plan of attack, that we'll leave that as a separate area of priority, but we'll try to cover it through ongoing dialogue with, with the schools since you guys are already having this conversation. And, and wrap it into the IT and the whole, you know, website and all that other stuff that we need to be talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the first thing we should do is go to MIA, the Mass Municipal Association and say, everybody's having the same problems. Let's set up some seminars. Is anybody having any luck with it and, you know?
I mean, do we have a town Facebook page or that sort of thing, social media?
No, but the police department has one and Park and Rec has one.
Fire has one.
Fire has one.
Library.
Library has one, so, but, but there's no like kind of general government one?
Because that's where you could put out a thing, you know, need to have your papers in by this day if you wanna run for the finance committee or not finance committee, but for the school committee or select board or whatever positions are opening for that election cycle. Cause I think people find out about it and then it's past the time where you had to pull papers and so, oh, okay, I'll do it next time. And then next time, rumor comes, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so kind of recapping here, so we started with this conversation about, does it make sense? Is anybody interested in getting information about, um, how other towns are structured in terms of, uh, getting things done? Their government structure, um, capital planning, we decided to kind of basically, it seems to be working and, and keep things going the way it is. Um, IT and HR were ongoing update there because there is some work underway. Ambulance, um, and fire, we're gonna be talking about a lot, uh, this evening. Um, the DPW issue we wrapped into capital planning. Um, and then we just had a discussion about boards. So if it come back around, does anybody want to have some sort of subgroup to, cause I, I didn't hear any other additional committees being formed. So does anybody want to at least just have a subgroup working on information gathering only about organization structure?
Right before that, like could I be remiss? We didn't go over in the list, um, least finance committee rate very high override options and learning about that. I know we talked about IT, HR.
Oh, yes, yeah. We, we did.
And fire and maybe individual plans of attacks for that, but assuming two or three or all three don't pan out, we really need to.
Right, and you are, have already done some outreach on that, right? Um, quick update on that?
All right, so just in terms of override options, you have a number of different opportunities depending upon what your priorities are. I've set up a countdown scheduled for the October town meeting with an idea that you would be following up that, uh, October fifth special town meeting with a, with an override vote. Um, that override vote can be contoured in any number of different ways. It can be a general, just adding money to the levy. Or it can be focused in on, uh, particular, uh, department or priority or, or project. And it can be tiered so that you can choose which level of funding or find out, does, allow the voters to discern what level of funding you would like to support a particular project. So.
And upcoming agenda though to all of that?
Well, I put it on your, tonight's agenda is resource materials, so if you go to the interactive agenda, you'll find.
Yeah, okay. I knew I'd seen it and I was trying to remember where.
Yeah.
I was reading through those, but we also talked about getting Sandy Poehler and Terry Williams.
Right, Terry Williams will not come out apparently. There's some sort of Department of Revenue rec, uh, restriction on coming to a posted public meeting. He'll be with us, it's a small group, you know, obviously less than a quorum, um, but for some reason, Department of Revenue doesn't come out to a posted meeting. Sandy Poehler, I did talk to and he's more than well willing to come out and help us out.
So we can always try to schedule him in July and then a question is, does it make sense to maybe ask Terry Williams to attend a finance committee meeting?
Yeah.
And then whoever wants to come can come.
Yep.
Well, isn't that a posted meeting?
Yeah, isn't that, that's a posted meeting.
Well, that's a posted meeting anyway. Yeah, okay, so would it have to be?
Maybe the, the chairs of the school committee, the finance committee and the select board. Maybe that would be the best way.
So none of them have a quorum?
Yeah.
No, but it's informational only.
Yeah, yeah. I know, still seems crazy.
I guess I'm glad that Gabe brought that up and not our board about override, but you know.
Or appointed, not elected, so.
It's, it's everybody's number one priority in their mind right now. I'm sure it's the school because you're gonna need extra money after just about taking everything from your school choice money. There's not much left there and we've got bills to pay and, but, you know, I, I can't honestly ask people to pay more in an override unless we can really spell it out to the T Y. You know, and after we find out what transpires in the fall town meeting with two eighteen, and then we're gonna have a better idea for two nineteen. And where the money can actually go and I think the money has to go to operating the town of Hadley efficiently.
Yeah, and I think if it brings on the same page, it would be a last resort, but.
You know, deal for the dollar we put in. It's quite obvious. And I really feel company with the, with the finance committee, the way you're attacking everything now. We've been missing that the last two years and, you know, it, it's a big, you know, burden off of our back to having a second support system.
Absolutely.
You know, instead of us just suggesting, you're looking at everything and coming back to us and this is what will work or won't work, you know? It's a big difference.
Can I ask who the liaison to the capital planning committee is in the municipal buildings committee? I don't know if those were addressed here.
Capital planning.
Yeah, I said on the.
This is what you're looking for?
And do we have a?
That's all your names and what you're assigned to.
Do we have a school committee member who's on the capital planning committee? That's you, Paul? Okay, thank you.
And municipal buildings committee?
Your simply education.
Is there anybody from finance on municipal building committee?
I was looking for if we'd assign that.
We, we forgot that one.
Oh, okay. So, to be determined.
For tomorrow night's meeting.
Yes, yeah.
I don't actually see capital planning under Gabriel either. Did I miss it?
Oh, he took over as soon as, when Mark left, he, he joined that group right away, didn't he?
Yeah, that was right away and I have a seat on that, so I was the last meeting and everything.
Okay, so, so you're continuing. You just, I didn't know if there was a restructuring in, I, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm still on there.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, so let's, let's wrap this up then. So we're coming back to, are we going to have any sort of formal group that wants to pursue the organization in charter stuff? Or we, it doesn't even have to be a formal group. I mean, if people wanna investigate it on their own, they can too.
Didn't we just do that with all the chairs?
No, that's the, um, override group to talk to the DOR.
Oh, yeah.
I, I'll, I'll look into some of it and I, I know Terry's looking into it as well.
Okay.
A little bit.
I'm happy to do some legwork too. Okay, John, you wanna join me? Hey, I picked up your library liaison.
No, but everybody has my email. If you wanna send me the information, I'm more than happy to look at it.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough.
So it sounds like an informal working between the Finance and.
Yeah, we have been to a work group and then, you know, if there is anybody on the schools that are interested.
Yeah, I'll let them know tomorrow morning. If you let us know if you see an intersection with the school.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And I think there may be with some of the ideas, some of these shared.
Yes.
Services.
Well, you did talk about getting public involvement or some kind of nonpartial party involved though. So if this is informal, would that still be on the table?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a work group and it's not a quote unquote sanctioned, I mean, it would have to go through an appointment process, you know, if we're going to formalize it, but if we're going to keep it informal.
Mad hoc.
Yeah, it's mad hoc.
Are we going to schedule another tri-board meeting in the near future where the school can, it's the twelfth?
Yeah.
What, I thought of, I thought that was just a regular one we talked about. It's the twelfth again at six o'clock?
Right.
Okay, that'll give the school time to bring back their problematic areas.
Correct.
And everyone then, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, move on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to thank everybody first. David?
Okay, thank you.
He's going to be on vacation.
Did I hear that you're closing the warrant on August second?
Well, that's what you have in the thing.
Unless we change those.
Yeah, but that's, those are my notes. Those are not your decision.
Usually go with your notes.
I, I think that's the plan until we, that may get changed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's tentative dates.
Yeah. Okay, right.
Okay.
Probably will take a poll now. A lot of stuff happening.
Not tonight.
Okay, so we can just adjourn the tri-board. We don't need a formal vote, correct? I don't remember.
Uh, you, you adjourn, you continue on with the meeting.
We're continuing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're welcome unless you guys are, you are posted for right now, so if you want to continue.
Very pleased to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Municipal Buildings Committee. Yeah, we need to assign somebody to that.
Yeah.
Oh, but we're doing that right now?
Because the meeting's tomorrow, right?
Okay, so, um, thanks everybody. So we're going to roll into our regularly.
And tomorrow too. Two, two postings.
Our regularly scheduled, uh, Select Board meeting?
Should have.
Um, so the first thing we have is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have approval for the minutes of May third, fourth and seventeenth. We have three warrants. We have a Town of Hadley Franklin County Solid Waste Management District contract for large removal. And we have transfer requests, um, from the Reserve Fund, uh, which are line to line transfer request. And that is for the Waste Department and HVAC?
Yep.
Right, those two? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, ready to move to a vote?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
I accept for Franklin County on solid waste.
And you abstain on that?
I will abstain on that, okay.
Okay. All right, um, we have just a few minutes for public comment. Is anybody here for public comment this evening? Hello, yes.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Glavatsky.
Um, I just came back from, uh, the Mass Collective Treasures Association Annual Conference.
Yep.
And of course I was watching you guys for your Finance Committee meeting. And I just wanted to let you know, um, the, the big tag item is human resource, like throughout the state. And some of the larger towns, you know, they have the Human Resource Directors and I've, I've gotten names of people that I, I just said to Linda. Um, you know, Michelle Pezy from Town in Norwood, she's like, have your person call me if she has any questions and that type of thing. But one of the things that, um, and Lauren Goldberg from Copeland and Page, she is their, uh, Public Records person for municipalities to go to. Um, she mentioned in her seminar, you all realize that you need to have your own public, uh, your own town or city's public records policy online by July one. And under no circumstances should it just be like a download from the bill. It has to include, you know, your RAOs and all of that type of thing, which, uh, that has to be adopted. So one of the reasons I'm here tonight is because I don't think we formally adopted. Okay, I, I don't remember that, David, but, um, but, you know, everybody is having the same.
Same issues.
Same issues, we are. Um, but, um, I just wanted to, it was, it was a great conference. Um, and I honestly wish I were here because it was warmer here than it was at the Cape. We froze to death and we got rained on and drowned out. But, um, it was a really great conference and I brought back materials that I will share with everybody, but.
That's great.
Yeah.
No, it was good, very timely.
Were there any conversations regarding smaller in between towns with the HR?
Um, there, there were, um, they were primarily negative of, of towns that have already done that. Because, and it was, it was a matter of, well, there were more problems in this town, so that person spent more time over there and we had problems over here and, but.
So the sharing didn't work necessarily?
It's, it's a tough thing to do. And it gets into a tug of war. And, and then you, and what was said was it gets into a, well, wait a minute. How come I'm paying the same amount you are, but you're getting more of that resource than we are and so there have been some issues with that, uh, and.
Sue, is there any more or less, uh, county level activity in the meeting that you, uh, you tended?
Um, well, the counties are.
Different out there.
It's different out there and, and they do have a lot of county sponsored things out there, but whereas we're COGS. Um, you know, it was very funny because, uh, one night at dinner, they had like this trivia and how many counties are in Massachusetts? And, and, you know, somebody said, oh, fourteen. And I said, well, no. Because Hampshire and Franklin are no longer counties, they're COGS, you know, so it's, um, it, it's a, a little bit different dynamic.
So could I, could I just ask, um, just because, yeah, we have to be careful not to get into a whole discussion because it's public comment. But thank you for getting all of that information and since one of our standing agenda items from now on is going to be HR, maybe we could coordinate to.
I would love that because I, I have a lot of information on, on what was said and I think it would be valuable.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, effective.
Yeah, no, that, that would be great. And so hopefully maybe even at the next July twelfth meeting, depending on how things shape up there. And that way you'll have a chance to share it too internally with town hall.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, is that, David, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody else pick up at the last meeting and I know this is the HR person?
Oh, yeah.
Parking lot?
Yes, I did. Okay, so, um, I was hoping to get, we have a standing, uh, seven fifteen appointment with the Ambulance Committee. So, um, but I was hoping to get the Senior Tax Work Off Program kind of, are, are you guys staying for the duration or?
Longer.
You are, okay. So then I guess we'll move into our seven fifteen. Because I'm just realizing you're going to be here for the senior center too, but, okay. All right, um, so we have an appointment this evening with.
Barbara coming? Is Barbara coming?
Uh, no, um, the Chair is not going to be able to make it this evening. She had a conflict that she had forgotten about. But we're going to move into an appointment with the Ambulance Committee. So, uh, just in terms of the composition of the Ambulance Committee, uh, it is Barbo Connor has been a former Select Board Member who's been acting as the Chair. Um, Joyce and I, um, are representing the Select Board. We have Amy Fiden from the Finance Committee, um, obviously Chief Spankable. And we also have George Moriarty, um, bringing firefighting expertise to the conversation and we.
Harry Barstow.
Hank Barstow. Ha- Harry?
Hank, he was Harry. It's Hank.
Hank. Hank Barstow and then also Steve Barstow. That's everybody, right? I think I had it right. Okay. Um, so just, you know, the, the charge of, is kind of a reformation of a, of a work group. And the intent there was to discuss, um, whether or not it made sense to put together an RFP. And given the fact that we have a contract with AMERST, we have one more year starting with July one remaining on our current contract with AMERST. So nothing that is being discussed tonight is going to disrupt any sort of ambulance coverage for the town. Um, you know, we're trying to get in front of that. And so the question is really whether or not, um, the ambulance work group wants to recommend, um, that the Select Board take action and that we actually do explore other alternatives. So Mike, do you mind speaking just for the few talking points about the recommendations coming out of the work group right now or?
Um, yeah, uh, we, we had multiple meetings where we brought in, uh, some really good speakers from different departments that have, that have started up depart, uh, Department of Ambulances. Also South County Ambulance, which took on three different communities. Um, so we got a lot of really good information from them. We surveyed, uh, the Chief of West Hampton came in. Uh, he's put together an ambulance service that's been very successful and quite inexpensive for the Town of West Hampton and the number of calls we had. Uh, the Chief of Ware came in, uh, Chief Tom Cologne came in and talked about his service. And then Russ Anderson, we actually did our first modeling after in Granby, is now the Chief in Southwick and he's now been, uh, actually moving up into a paramedic level service from a basic level service. So he gave us some really good information as well. And again, uh, there's members of the board here, so please just express up, I'm not saying this properly, but with the information that we've all reviewed, uh, I believe the decision of the committee was that we felt that it would be a, a priority for us to put together that RFP, a request for proposals. And to get it out and to see what came back in, uh, create a level playing field with all the information that we got from these different resources. We have a graph put together that I'm working to, I'm waiting for some responses. Once all those responses come in, we'll be, uh, handing off the document to David for review. And, um, and also I'm sure it'll be handed out to all of you as well. And, uh, and then we're hoping to get that out sooner than later so the folks can start digesting it and see what comes back. That was, that was the first part. The second part was to see what the selectmen were looking for following that. So if you wanted to keep the committee together to be the group that actually reviews any, uh, proposals that come back. And then also if we're going to be tasked with putting together, um, a panel of questions and, and items like that, that we would be moving into actual question and answers with the different folks that have, have put proposals in so we could actually survey them and see, see what they, they have to offer.
And I think everybody on the, the committee, we, we asked, um, if people were interested in, in staying on, if it was the will of the Select Board. And, and I think unanimously people said, yes, they'd like to stay with the Board.
What's the RFP look like? What are we looking for?
Basically with all the.
Sorry. John's question.
No, I just wanted to know what level of service you were looking for pretty much.
Well, we, we've actually gone through that quite a lot and the information that came back, there was a big concern about that we were going to be dropping our level of service and that is not the intent at all. The intent of this whole process is to improve our level of, of service. So the biggest portions in the RFP are to actually bring an ambulance into Hadley if possible. Or if it's a private ambulance service where they would put it in order that they could meet all the NFPA requirements to make sure it's getting there in the same or less amount of time than it takes for AMERST to get here.
So your generic can open as to all opportunities. Some is to have it, uh, managed ourselves. Other things are to bring in other companies that are professional companies that own and operate ambulance services to set up somewhere and do the runs from here.
Correct. We're also looking for somebody to be a partner with the Town of Hadley. There's, uh, there's, there's a lot of stuff in the RFP. We've looked at communications, uh, dispatching, whether we're going to go regional or in-house. Uh, training for our department, which is something that was in our contract with AMERST. So actually building our department. We were tasked with finding new sources of revenue for the Town of Hadley. And looking at the numbers, I, I'm pretty sure there's some potential resources for, for revenue there that, um, are quite interesting. That, you know, we've presented in the past with our last six years of study. So we're just looking for somebody that's going to team up with us to maybe work towards a full-time, fire-based ambulance service that, you know, can support the Town of Hadley. We are not looking to decrease the service. There was a question about, uh, advanced level of care versus, versus a basic level of care. And I think Chief Norris stated it the best, that the state sets when you have an ALS ambulance come. And that doesn't change. What changes is the priority, and every single department stated this, is to get the person to the hospital. It's not to wait for an ALS ambulance. So that's the priority. If we can get an ambulance to a house in four minutes rather than eight and package them and start them to the hospital, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's where you're getting the true positive care for the, the, your patients and your, and your residents. So that's, that's all stuff that's been presented into this RFP as well to make sure that there is an improvement in the care and not, not any kind of decrease in any manner or form, so.
And all the mutual aid agreements will still be in effect also.
Mutual aid, I mean, mutual aid is always in effect, but there's also a whole plan that has to be put together. There's a whole plan of what happens if your, both of your ambulances are out on calls, who's next in line? You have a whole service zone plan that basically AMERST has been doing for us, but it's the Town of Hadley Service Zone Plan. So that's very specific and that's also required under Master and Law.
So actually, is, in a way that you said it, is that we would want to partner with another ambulance service, whether it be AMERST is still in the running or, um, Northampton is in the running or any private, uh, ambulance services in the running, which would make us move into the future of what we want for our ambulance service. Um, and that would be building towards our own eventually, but then partner with us to help us move to that.
I think in our last meeting, we spoke, um, when we, when we finally tried to finalize the RFP, which I think is still kind of moving around a little bit. I think the RFP is a, is a starting document. It spells out some of the, you know, the stuff we're looking for. Uh, I think in the RFP states, you know, we're looking for advanced life support. So a company that comes in is going to have to supply advanced life support. With, with training or for the firefighters to take some of the, the, the training criteria would be, would be put on them. I think there's still a lot of questions, um, when it comes down to how the dispatch would work. I think it really comes down to, you know, where, where funds are going to be put, um, and, and how it's going to work out. But this is a starting document. All we're asking is who's interested? And this is a general outline. Come in, give us, you know, give us some information, um, at that point. Then it would, it would be, you know, it's not a contract by no means. It's not even really a bid document, uh, it's non-binding. So it's, it's just some general information. Get, get a group of people that, you know, it was put out there, who wants to come in and look at it. And then, uh, you know, maybe they have some good ideas too that, that, that work in other towns.
Here's some fair and reasonable offers for what we're looking for for an ambulance service.
You know, it really, uh, I mean, when you add it all up, uh, you know, there's a lot of options. Do you want to use town-owned property? Do you want to, are you going to put it in, uh, building on your own? I mean, all that stuff has costs attached to it and all that stuff is in there. So one company may say, no, we don't want to deal with the, putting a, uh, ambulance to the station. We're going to rent space ourselves. So all that's there. So in the end, I guess it comes down to, you know, where are you going to put it? Is it in a, in a spot in town that is going to, you know, get, get you to most of the town within that four or six minutes? So, I mean, it's really just a, the starting point of it is, you know, we might get ten people, we might get two. You know, they may look at it and say, well, we want no part of it, but I think, uh, I think that we can, we can go and talk to all the fire chiefs we want. Hadley's always a little bit different. You know, it's just the, the way the runs are, the amount of runs we have for such a small population is always a, an issue. So I think in the end, it, it's best for the town to go, to go out to some type of bid. If nothing else, uh, we'll learn a lot and, uh, the townspeople understand.
Yeah, you'll have some kind of leverage at that point to say, look, this is, this is X amount of dollars, what it's going to cost us this way and there you have it.
Right, and, and it's.
I'm sorry, Mike, you had your hand up before?
We're just, we've really broken it down in the, the RFP as well so that they will put together multiple proposals for different tracks, basically. So that we can get all that, all that information.
The RFP will eventually turn into a contract. The proposed contract would be possibly for how many years?
That's totally up to you. I mean, the, the thing about the RFP, there is some information that would be transferred over into contract, but there's also a lot of other information that we would be adding into that contract as well. So this is, um, there is a lot of information in here that would be transferred, but I'm sure there'll be additional. sure there'll be additional.
We've got your contracts, is what we've done.
Yep.
Yeah, so we should attach the contract, or substantially the...
The completed contract to the RFP, so people know what they're getting into when they submit a proposal.
I don't know if we're going to know what the contract needs to look like, because I think there's going to be a variety of options available to us. I was talking to Chief O'Connor, who said that if you get into the Midwest, where she was the head of safety over there, she said there's a variety and a matrix as far as different opportunities, you know, ambulance services will come in and, and love to run the service in their town. There's, we have extended care facilities in here, they can run runs out of there, and other ways to finance ventures for themselves. So I don't know, you know, exactly what it's going to look like as far as the contract. It's going to be predetermined by what these services are that they're able to provide us.
So, so the contract would include terms and conditions that would be standard regardless of what, what the scope of service would be? So you've got your indemnification requirements, your insurance requirements, your staffing requirements, et cetera, so.
We incorporate that in the RFP?
There's a lot of boiler, there's a lot of boilerplate language that should be...
Is that already incorporated in the RFP?
No.
Most of that is in there. Bonds and stuff, I think it's in there.
It needs to be tightened up, though.
Termination. That's fine, so for tonight, we purposely, you know, in terms of getting the RFP finalized, I think, you know, from the time this...
It's basically what Amherst has, right now?
What we were hoping to do is have the select board take a vote to have David notify Amherst formally, in accordance with the current contract, that we are planning on going out to bid, because it's a stipulation in the contract, correct?
Service specifications.
So, once we do that, then, you know, there will be time for the committee and David to finalize that RFP, to make sure that any concerns David has. You know, Barbara had several very detailed suggestions from her, her experience, right? But the, to Mike's point, the hope would be to get that out the door in the month of July for sure.
I just think there's, there's a lot of options in there that would, is, is a big money item, like, you know, just one of them is the dispatch being able to be 911D, where they can answer the, the medical calls. Right now, they're transferred to Amherst, they deal with that. If there's options, obviously, Hadley hires more dispatchers, it's paid through the ambulance, it's the ambulance committee, or the, excuse me, the ambulance that maybe gets the bid has their own dispatch, so the calls will be transferred there, so where there isn't really a cost as much. So there's, there's just a big swing of where we could end up. There's just a lot of, so I...
Is our 911 tied into Mass State Police right now?
If it's, if it's your cell phone, it goes off your cell phone to the state police.
It's transferred to us from the state police, just like we transfer to Amherst.
Through our dispatch, or it's kind of, it's still made by a call?
It's made by a call, so if you call from your cell phone, it goes to state police, and then it's transferred to us. And then if it's a medical call, we then transfer it to Amherst.
All 911 system is being revamped, so we're going to be seeing that updated.
This is the point I'm trying to make about dispatch, you know, we're not tying into the state police yet, or, you know, our dispatch does not direct, push a button and like we do with the ambulances.
You do with a landline.
You do with a landline, that's...
But not cell phone.
That's the new enhanced system that's going to be coming very shortly to all the towns in Massachusetts, whereby you're going to have a system that pinpoints exactly within several feet of where that call is originated. And with all the address, we just had a whole course on that this morning.
To Molly's point, I'd like to make a motion that we do the proper notification to Amherst to get the, the process moving there.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to put Amherst on notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, and then in terms of, and this doesn't have to be a vote, but just in terms, is there any opposition to the work group continuing along the lines of...
Absolutely.
I'd make a motion that we allow the...
It's ongoing, your process here anyways.
And they're well vested in it, know exactly what they're looking for. I couldn't be happier with the makeup of the committee, let me make a motion to allow that to continue.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, all right, so that's it for the...
Well, the RFP, I mean, we'll...
Well, that'll be coming, yeah.
Okay.
Further conversation about that. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and thank you, yeah, and again, for the work that the other committee members who are here, and those who aren't present, you know, there's been a lot of hard work and time put into this so far, and more to come. So thank you to everybody who's volunteered. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the fire substation and senior center updates, but we also have the notice of intent to sell Chapter 61A land, which is the Hoineski property, which is relevant to the discussion of the fire substation. So what we're going to do next is move into a conversation about the current status of the fire station as voted on at town meeting, and, and then have a discussion about the Hoineski property. So I know representatives are here from the municipal building committee as well, thank you. So David, do you want to kind of...
Yeah, so on May 18th, we received a notice of, of intent to sell land under Mass General Law, Chapter 61A, which is protected farmland. So under this Mass General Law, the town has a right of first refusal. They have 120 days in which to exercise that right of first refusal. So May 18th to June 21st, let's call it the 33rd day right now. And there's a technicality with that, we don't have to go into right now. The Conservation Commission has looked at this property, it's a nine, almost 10 acre parcel at the intersection of Stockbridge and River Drive. Conservation has looked into this parcel, and they've decided not to exercise their right of first refusal on the property. It really is the select board's right of first refusal, so they're just advising you that they don't have any particular intention in, in acquiring that particular parcel. So that's where we stand right now. We have another, call it 90 days, in which to exercise that right of first refusal. I've been in contact, or I've been contacted by attorneys for both the prospective seller and the prospective buyer, and I've just told them the facts of the situation, is that the select board are going to be considering this tonight.
I'd like some clarity as far as notification goes. Does that mean that we, if we were to determine down the road that we were interested in that piece of property within 40 days, and we notify them that they were interested, what does that mean? Do we have X amount of time to buy that for the fair market value at that point in time? Or what does that mean? We just have to notify them that we're interested?
I believe you just have to notify them to be, that you're interested, but you have to make a genuine attempt to meet the seller's price.
As of when? Within the 120 days? So we would need to schedule a special town meeting to fund this within 120 days of...
Well, this is, this is, this is a technicality, is that according to the law, they're supposed to send this to the town by certified mail. They did not do that, they delivered it in hand, so one could make a case that the clock hasn't even started ticking yet.
Okay, regardless, regardless, the formal way in which this process is done is which I would like explained to me. Do we need to purchase that property by vote of town meeting floor to come up with the money, and does it need a election, I mean, a vote, a ballot vote as well? And do we have to do that within 120 days of whatever the, the date is?
Yeah, Jerry, that's a fair question, and I'm going to look it up right now.
Okay.
We'd still have to deal with that exclusion, two and a half, so we would need a ballot vote, definitely.
It would seem that that would be the case, unless we had some other way of funding it.
Unless you took the money somewhere else, correct?
And, and depending on your point of when we were actually notified, it may go right into special town meeting, you can put a miracle offer, special town meeting.
Depending on the time.
Depending on the time of the date.
Did you have a question, Jane, or?
No.
No, okay.
See, there's a couple things, you know, I mean, we're looking at $400,000 there. If we were to purchase it for a fire station location due to different circumstances now, but yet we would look for CPA money to possibly fund another part of it, if we were to put fields or other things up there. This is, I mean, we're going to open up a hornet's nest here, and, and I want to know and understand the process, we need to go to navigate that.
Okay, David, do you want us to wait, or do you want us to keep talking?
Yeah, keep on talking for a little bit.
We can only get a portion of that property for CPA money.
Yes, sir.
And we'd have to close it all off and get it all laid out, and then show them a print of what you're going to put there, and it's just land that they'll give you money for.
Yeah, and I think, I think the primary focus of the conversation tonight is, is this something that we seriously want to pursue? And if the answer to that is yes, to Jerry's point, I think there'd be an awful lot of, of work that has to get done before we could, you know, really move forward with it and get a lot of these questions answered.
Truly want to understand the timetable on this, and whether or not this is something that's...
And, and you're going to have to make sure that if you do go after the CPA funds for some land that's there, nothing else can be built on it when you use it with CPA funds. So if you get it for park, then you can change it into a...
Yeah.
Roger, a large fire department on it, so. Thing to do is if you're going to enlarge, put the fire...
Well, David's looking for that information, just going to some general discussions that the municipal building committee had. This, this goes back quite a while. That was one of our first thought processes about that property, was it would be great, based on the information from the fire department and the chief, on times to, for, if the fire station was there, this fire substation was there, it would actually decrease its times down to the mall. So we thought it was a very good site for it. We go back to some of the preliminary site plans that we thought, we'd only need an acre or a little bit more for the fire station, so the rest would be open to some other use. Like Jerry said, it actually would be advantageous to put some fields up there, good place for CPA money to be utilized. So we talked some more last couple meetings in regards to this thought process of bringing it forward, and we did vote on it as a municipal building committee, that we thought it would be very advantageous at this time to look at that property and go forward with it, and start talking about getting some funding to do that initial process, i.e. get some professional feedback on where it would be best to put that, locate the fire station, get some soil samples, and go through borings and all that, and get that ready, and that'll give us a better understanding for it. We, you know, certainly, our committee believes that would be the one, certainly a better site. We would have much more parking, much more use, a lot more area, if we ever had to expand. Right now, we're not talking, thinking about expanding for the fire station, but if we ever had to, now you have the land to do it. So if you, that's what our position is right now, we want to fully support you in going forward with it.
Okay, and I know, I can say at least two, I think there are butters, yeah, two of butters have gone on record saying that they would be happy to have a town substation and that location. David, I think David just...
So, complicated, so I want to verify what I'm reading here, but at the very least, you have 120 days from, from receipt of the notice to exercise your right of first refusal. You have to have public hearing before you can write that, exercise that right of first refusal. After that, you made contact with the landowner with your, with your price, and if agreeable, you have an additional 90 days after that in order to exercise, execute that contract. So if I'm thinking about this correctly, it's about 210 days built into your calendar there.
But it would have to be voted on at town meeting?
It would, you would require a vote of town meeting, unless you want to assign the rights of first refusal to some third party, such as Kestrel Land Trust, and I'm just picking them out of the air because I was talking to them yesterday.
Would all the, when you're talking about the borings and making sure that you can build a municipal fire station on that done before? It just seems we don't want to go through that problem again.
What we're going through is library and existing...
I mean, normally you get an engineer, you get an architect, this is the building size, this is what you're going to, you know, you go out there and you do the actual study before you actually buy a piece of land.
That's what works.
Right, that's, that would be something that would have to happen before town meeting?
But most of that's all been done for the, for the fire station in North Hadley already, all the architect, engineering, not like...
This is site-specific, though, is in that sort of...
Well, you have some information relative to the, the loading of the building on the site. The boring is a pretty quick thing to do, and, and then you've done a lot upfront, so you just match the two together. It, it would be a pretty quick process.
And would we be able to secure the funding for the borings? David?
Yeah, I'm calculating.
Oh, okay.
How much money are we talking about?
We're talking about $5,000.
$5,000.
How's the finance committee with there?
I think there's still a little left in that, especially if you install it.
Yeah, you would have to, I think you have to go to the finance committee for that. Before we do the borings, we need to have some good understanding and idea where the building needs to go. Because you don't want to do the borings where the building won't be. So we need the chief's input. It would be advantageous to get the architect involved in this upfront. You let him look at the site with the chief and say, hey, this is a better place for it, based on what he's already done so far.
Yeah, the chief and then John.
Well, I mean, the gentleman that did the borings at the North Hadley site right now gave us some initial information on that site with, and actually projected what his opinion is the best location of where the fire station would be. And he has some topographical maps with depths of soils there that he got from, I don't know where he got the, the information from, but that was provided to us, and he also, you know, that's when he gave us, he gave us that estimate of a price to do the borings. So we have an idea of where the best location would be to do the borings.
Not in the middle of property, right?
It's actually right near the road.
John?
Yeah, I think it's outrageous what you folks are doing. Just a year ago, in a few months, 400 people said no for that particular partial land to buy that in its entirety. And yet you come back, you wonder why people don't go back to town meeting, for what? If they vote no, somehow you guys want to figure out how to make it yes. Far as, far as the site's concerned, you're going to have to hire an architect and do the borings, pick out the site. I really don't care where this thing goes, but the fire station doesn't need no more a substation than an acre and a half of land. And it's the intent of this board, I know it is, to do other things with it and look out taxpayers.
You're not telling them the whole story.
Well, you know...
Yeah, well...
But there's no reason to... Yeah. But the problem also is that the price of that piece of property was over $700,000.
No, $550,000.
$550,000, so now it's $400,000.
Not much difference.
And there's, I mean, and again, just... $150,000 difference.
For the folks that are listening at home, 40 of you maybe, I don't know, but just a reminder, the reason that we're having this conversation is that there's been a change in circumstances. Two things have happened. Number one, this particular property actually now has been on the market for a while, it has a possible purchaser, which has helped establish a price that was different from what was at town meeting. The second thing that happened, and the most important thing, is that their identification of the site work cost to move forward with the project for the substation to be located and land adjacent to North Hadley Hall came out another $375,000 or so higher, meaning that we would have to come up with that amount of money just to ready the site for construction. So clearly, buy nine acres, $400,000, plow $375,000 into property that people weren't comfortable with in the first place. I think there's every reason for us to be having this discussion, and I hope that the residents actually appreciate the fact that we're not just plowing forward, we're trying to do this right. Donald?
Nine and a half acres gives the town a lot of flexibility for the future. Plus, there's water and sewer on the site, which is a big factor, you know, and...
Nine and a half acres gives the town a lot of flexibility for the future. Plus, there's water and sewer on the site, which is a big factor, you know. And as the chief said, when North Hadley, Fire Engine leaves North Hadley Station, now they head to Stockbridge Road to get to the malls to do it faster. And it would be an ideal location right there, just a straight shot and you're there. You know, we don't have the answers to anything, everything. Initially, I wish we did, I wish we had a ball in front of us, we could predict the future. But there's been a great deal of changes since we started this thing. Initially, our main concern was staffing the fire department with a safer grant, which we never received for four personnel. And that sort of got put on the back burner. And we got into building a substation in the northern section, which everybody agreed is needed. But today, it's all did a reverse. And we're looking at the staffing, which is more of a priority now than a building. Maybe we could stay a little longer in the fire station where we are and survive and eventually build an adequate fire station in the future in this lot. But this gives us an awful lot of options. As Mr. Michikowski mentioned, maybe we're thinking in the future, maybe someday the DPW could be relocated there. We don't know, we have no idea, you know. And maybe the DPW could become the park and rec area, who knows? I wish I had a crystal ball and could give you those answers. But nine and a half acres gives us a lot of flexibility for the future. And this town's gonna continue to grow. And the biggest residential input is in the northern section of town. And the southern sec, section of town is almost all tied into APR land. There's gonna be minimal building in the southern section of town in the future. It's all gonna be up in the northern section.
DCR, Longmont Ring.
That's right. Mike, were you trying to? Oh, okay, I thought you had your hand up. John?
Yeah, the point of information, what you said, the three hundred thousand dollars in the overrun. If we bought, oh, say, an acre and a half of land or an acre of land to build this fire substation, your top would probably be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we bought it for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we wouldn't spend, spend three hundred thousand dollars on an overrun. So what you're saying, we, we save, that's not true. That's, it's true if you stay at that site. But if we find a site just for the fire substation, we're gonna spend probably no more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we already saved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by not doing what we gotta do to that site.
What was the recommendation on the fire substation? Committee?
There was nine members, I believe, on the committee. And the vote was to proceed to investigate purchasing this land to an eight to one vote.
Not to purchase.
The vote was to...
No.
It was for you to request if we could find out information about boring on the site. If the owner would allow that to happen, so we could do investigation of that site. To see if it would be...
But it, it's the intent of the committee.
But with the intent to possibly purchase it in the future. Why would you be doing bore testing if you didn't wanna purchase it in the future?
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm saying.
You know, that's what I was trying to say, it's all the same.
We wanted, we wanted to explore the thought of that piece of property.
Dan, Regis?
I mean, the Municipal Buildings Committee recommended this site over a year ago, like John said.
And it failed.
And, and it failed because at that time, the finance committee recommended against it and, at town meeting. And nobody had any idea what was going on at that point. All, the, the townspeople, all they knew was that all of a sudden, we're gonna buy some property. And there was no information attached to that. They had no idea this came up quick. The Municipal, Municipal Buildings Committee had been tossing the idea around. But it was, it was instantly available and we tried to get it, it, it didn't go through. No matter what site you put that fire station on, be it North Hadley Hall or the place where you need to do some borings to find out if it'll work, you're still gonna have to do site work there. It's still gonna cost you a little more to do the site work for that, to prepare for the building anyway. It, it's, it, it's still gonna cost a bunch of money. And you just wanna do it right the first time. That was our, our first recommendation was that piece of property. And I, you know, again, Municipal Buildings Committee unanimously, unanimously supported, you know, that, that piece of property, you know, and, you know, pursuing that to, to get this project done, so.
And, and again, to...
The confusion at town meeting was we're just buying the property.
Right.
Now, we're absolutely looking on putting a fire substation on a portion of this land.
We don't know how we were gonna buy it, what we were gonna, you know, where the money, was it gonna be CPA? Was it gonna be park and rec land? Was it gonna be, nobody knew anything. But now the opportunity rises again. And, you know, this time, there's a clock ticking.
Yes.
So I think it's an important thing to pursue quickly.
Matt?
Yeah, to that point though, there ought to be some sort of plan for what to do possibly with the other nine acres so we don't get to town meeting. And someone comes up and says, what do you do with the other nine acres? We only want one acre. So I'm, I'm not sure if there's frontage on the Connecticut River or not for that property.
Not unfortunately, yeah.
Never mind.
That would, that would be like a slam dunk, but yeah.
Exactly. But given that the, the growth in residential will be in the northern part of town, there's no public land for parks in the northern part of town.
Right.
There's no public pavilion in town. There, there are very few public spaces to have events and that sort, so.
You're a weak link, you just had this kind of...
So, so as, as this goes forward, there ought to be before town meeting, a suggestion of what to do with the other portion of the property.
Yeah, that's a reason.
And I think, Matt, if you heard that if we use CPA funds, it would have to stay into fields or parks or of that nature. So it would certainly behoove us to look into that too.
Well?
Yeah, we, back when we first looked at that property, I had it surveyed by Randy. He did his favor. And Park and Rec also took the plan, marked out a place for the fire station and marked out the bat, baseball field, the soccer field, tennis court, and the, the... So that's all on, on a plan that we proposed, that I proposed to CPA and see how much money that they would allow. But they said until such time as they had everything certified and how much land we were gonna get, how much it would cost. They said it doesn't make sense to talk anymore on it. So we just let it go right there. But I have the prints and plans and all that.
Well, one, one thing, I guess just, you know, I'm reluctant to do, it kinda goes to what, I agree with what Donald was saying is, and I think the conversation right now truly is about the substation. And I think everybody knows that I also still have questions about the substation. But I'll ask the chief to speak to that later, just to, to again, have everybody in the same room at the same time. But I think, I also don't want to, to necessarily rush a foregone conclusion about the acreage in front of. I mean, and sometimes you need time for things to percolate. And I think, you know, you guys, the Municipal Building Committee's been doing a lot of work. But, you know, we still need the master plan update discussion and all of that. So I think, you know, everybody realizes that if we move forward with the substation, we do only need, you know, whatever, an acre or so, whatever that winds up measuring out to. And we'll have time to think through thoughtfully what other possible uses there are of land. But as, as many people have said, and I've said it here before, we're not making more land. So, you know, that, that this opportunities aren't necessarily going to be there in the future. And like Donald said, who, who knows? I mean, as we continue forward with all of our planning, there may be three or four possible uses that we come up with for that property. And yes, if it's parks, we can get CPA funding, but maybe that's not the highest and best use, so we don't wanna get on that path. But I think that's a separate conversation. The first thing is to figure out, are we gonna be able to secure this property or not?
I have a question in regards to CPA. How about, suppose we go ahead and, and take some money for CPA? And then, then the decision in a couple years is, well, that's probably not the best. Can you give the money back to CPA?
I think you can, you can give CPA money back, can't you?
So we could do a vote and say, oh, it's a better use if we do this, but in the interim, we have to get the money first.
Just another point of interest. It's all state already. There's four buildable building lots along Route forty-seven, which the average building lot, I think Tim would verify, is probably a hundred thirty-five to a hundred fifty.
It's actually about a hundred and eighty price.
So that's six hundred thousand, plus you have a ten bit tobacco barn on there, which would cost a hundred thousand dollars to build today.
Who are you gonna grow tobacco now?
So, and again, I'm just gonna ask this question because, Mike's smiling, he knows it's coming. So there has been some ongoing discussion about, you know, okay, again, now, now that we know that we've sat through many select board meetings and listened in the finance committee meetings, that it appears that at least both of those groups seem to be heading towards recommending strongly to the town that we move to a full-time daytime fire force, retaining our call force in the evening. Again, it hasn't been put in front of town meeting yet, but it looks like we're leaning towards that being a, an ask. Does that in any way change the necessity of having a substation or even the timing of building a substation? Do we want to hit the pause button? And I'm not saying not move forward with this property, 'cause I think buying that property is a good idea all day long. But do we hit the pause button and then rethink what would that mean to modifications to Central Station if we can just kind of leave things as they are and spend five or six thousand dollars on the doors for North Hadley Hall? And I know that waiting on a substation means that costs only go in one direction, construction costs, which would, would be up, and that's one consideration. But our poor chief has been subjected to this line of questioning ad nauseam from me. But I, I wanted you to have the opportunity to speak to that publicly so people can hear it from you.
So the priority obviously is staffing. We can't maintain anymore, that's in your MRI report. It's in all my reports, my five-year phase plan. We applied for a safer grant, we'll be probably attempting to do it again. But it's extremely difficult to get it with the resources that the town has right now. So obviously, we don't have the call force that we used to have. There's a heavy, heavy commitment on training and education, and folks have busy lives now. So what I've told everybody is that if you, if you do a daytime staff, we were, we've requested four full-time folks for daytime staffing, including myself and Nick. So that would be basically two firefighters on shift with myself and Nick. And so we're still looking at needing a call force department no matter what. So I know there's been discussions if we invest up the money in Center Station. Unless the town's, you know, ready to invest in a twenty-four, seven, three hundred sixty-five day a year around the clock, a fire department. And even with that, we are still always gonna have to, we're gonna be relying on a call force department. Every department around us, other than North Hampton, they all have call force departments, student forces, and, and backup. That department up there, it was, you know, it was put together by the original chiefs of the department saying that that was a priority to have something up there. And I, and I, you know, I've stated that we can, we can maintain where we are. It's just we need to, we need to make it safe. I mean, the, the building is not, it's not, it's barely habitable for, you know, folks to be in. But, you know, you've all been in there, you've seen what it looks like. So it needs to be upgraded. The north station that is, that's there now. So if you wanted to keep our two pieces of apparatus in there, absolutely can happen.
That's what she's saying, Mike.
No, she, well, she's asking if we can hold off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's, she's asking if we can keep what we have there so that we can still have a call force department responding there. If, any crack, if I'm wrong.
Well, two, two things. One is, is there any feasibility of us getting away with not having a presence, a substation at all? And then the second question would be, if the answer to that is no, we have to have some sort of presence up there in North Hadley, could we really scale back the building design and recognizing that we want to preserve resources that inevitably we're going to need to put into Central Station? So rather than have a multimillion dollar project, is there a way to somehow scale this back? I mean, I think those are the questions on people's minds. You know, do we, do we need it at all if we go to a full-time day force? And you're saying, yes, we do.
Absolutely. There's, there's, there's no question in my mind, and there's other folks here that can chime in on that, but...
But, but then the second thing comes to, from a planning standpoint, and let's just, let's just jump ahead and say, hang, hang on a second, John, let me just, just say for the sake of argument that town meeting votes and says, yes, we're funding a full-time day force. If one year later, you might be coming back and saying, we really need twenty-four, seven coverage because the call force has dwindled down to nothing, then do you really need the substation? So, so I think that, and I'm not putting words in Donald's mouth, but I think these are the things we need to think through.
Well, I mean, I presented that to you, it's my opinion that you need twenty-four, seven staff now. I mean, that's, I, that's in my, that's in my, my document. And it's in the MRI report. We, we need twenty-four hour day staffing. But we're, we decided that we were gonna do a phased-in approach for it. So starting off with the full-time day staffing, 'cause that's when seventy percent of the calls were. Again, like I told you, we are, we are actively recruiting, but we're just not getting, we're not getting a return on it right now. That's why when we talked, you know, with schools, trying to see if we can get back into the schools physically and, and try and pique some interest. And so, I mean, ultimately, can we scale back and have a smaller department with two pieces of apparatus? Yes, but you also asked me to plan for the future. So a hundred years down the road, is that structure gonna be built, you know, big enough for what we have, what we have going on? There's a lot of houses still going up in the north end of town. The calls aren't going down.
There's always that reasonable doubt in everybody's mind that I've had probably seventy-five calls on to. And I've been on the truck where I just happened to be driving by the station. And I got on the truck and I beat the North Hadley truck. Other times, North Hadley truck was there yelling on the radio, where the hell are you? When are you gonna get here? And I've been on receiving into that call too, many, many times.
If in two years though, that we're requesting a twenty-four, seven...
It doesn't matter, that truck, even if you're sitting in a station, is the point I'm trying to make.
Well, well, but...
At some point, the, the size of the fire, if there's a real house fire, Summerlin may not get there faster than us, North Hadley may not get there faster than us, Amherst may not get there faster than us.
But I think it's a question, it's a question of timing. And again, and I'm sorry, but I think it's really important for people to hear this discussion play out because it's, it's not obvious.
Every call's different, you know. I, I, I know on an overall, the daytime shift is a whole different issue, you know.
Right, so, but the question is, if...
When the call force is home in their house and they can get to the station and get to the fire, that makes a difference.
But, but right, right now, we have not sold North Hadley Hall.
Correct.
Correct, so we still own it, we still have the apparatus up there.
We have the ability to sell it.
Pardon?
We have the ability to sell it.
We have the ability to sell it, but we have not sold it. So what I'm questioning in my mind is if, within a relatively short amount of time, does it make sense into, to, to actually put some amount of money into maintaining North Hadley Hall strictly for the fire apparatus until a point in time where we're putting ourselves on a path to recommend a full-time twenty-four, seven, hang on, fire force? So I'm saying that, that's, that's the thought process. And if we're five, six, seven years away from it, then it makes all the sense in the world to me that we move forward with a scaled-down substation now. And so that's, that's just what I'm, I'm trying to fair it out, so.
Well, we already, we already allocated money to get that building repaired. And I think, you know, we at least need to do that before winter.
Yeah, the doors.
The doors and things.
System in there, if you could just subject in that cold station to burn all that equipment, 'cause you don't have a sprinkler system in it.
Tim, Tim and George, one of you?
A couple things. Yeah, I worry about the condition of North Hadley Hall. So our committee has always said it would be wise to do a new building because you're always going to have serious problems with that building. And you're going to get into this huge problem when you start going down that road. You're gonna start triggering code issues where you're going to just be sinking too much money into it. So our recommendation is to go to a new building. The other thing that keeps not bring, that's not being brought up is, the other good thing about having a new building is for a disaster. If anything happened here, you now have a, and, and I would not go to anything smaller than, than's been recommended. Because if we do have a disaster, we have some other place to go to, we have backup. If you just do, do a couple days to put these trucks in, like we have right now, if we ever have a disaster, I think it's going to be a big issue. So let's start thinking about those type of things. And when we start looking at that, it's really not that much of money when we start looking at the price of the substation.
And again, if we're going in front of town meeting, it's important to have all of these arguments laid out. George, you wanna say something?
I just, I'm, I'm kinda a little bit...
I just, I'm, I'm kinda a little bit on the fire end, is when you, you keep saying that it's a full-time department, and, and Mike is talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, hiring, you know, two more full-time guys during the day so that between, you know, the two guys and then, you know, him and Nick, it's a four-man crew. And, and even if you were able to get four people on full-time at night, and then weekends, four people at a structured fire really do nothing, because you're gonna have an officer, you're gonna have somebody taking a hydrant, you can't, you can't even go into a burning building. So, you're always gonna have a call force, or you're gonna have, you know, six guys or eight guys firefighters on, on call 24/7. I'm not sure the town's ready to do that, you'd be probably hiring 40 guys, or, or people. So, do, do I wanna be correct, I'm sorry, but to turn around and say that because you hired two firefighters, that's really not gonna change a whole lot, except, you know, there's gonna be people there that are gonna respond to, they're gonna be able to handle all the small calls, you know, where, where you're not pulling the, the call force out of the house at 2:00 in the morning for an alarm or, or for, for minor stuff. But, any real fire, you, you really need more than four guys. I mean, it's really, there's, there's, there's a lot of stuff, you know, two, two guys go into a burning building, you have to have two guys outside to rescue them. So, without a call department, that doesn't work. And it comes into more of a thing when you're, you know, when you're 10, you know, maybe you might be 15 minutes away from the center station on a snowy day, that that truck in North Hadley can get up there and, and start doing stuff, so.
Or if the truck's out on another call.
Or out on another call, but what I'm saying is, you really just don't get hung up, because you're not really hiring a full-time fire department, you're hiring two guy, two people. You know, on top, you're, you're, you're gonna get a truck there, but they can't even go into a burning building. So, there's always gonna be a call force, and I think you have to support something in that end, whether you, you know, maybe you build a shale out to the size you want, and maybe you don't outfit it, and then you can maybe save $400,000, you can buy the property without going through the whole thing again. But, to, to just say we're gonna have a full-time department in six years, we don't need one, I don't think that'll ever happen.
But, again, it's, it's a question. Because then, there's so many people talking about this in town, I think it's really important, these questions come up, and I'm not really sure how to answer them, I said, that's a good question, so let's, let's talk about it.
I just think two firefighters that consist themselves as a full-time department that are gonna be able to do structural operations.
There's quite a few people on this board that have been a select board member for a number of years. I've made a lot of tough decisions in the seven years I've served. This is one of the toughest decisions I'm having right now, I was 100% for this, but with the upload of this lot, it's changing the tone. $400,000, that's the cost of this nine-and-a-half acres. It's a no-brainer.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if that upload cost wasn't at this site, and we own the land, I'd be 100% to push ahead with that site. But, that upload cost is killing me, and I'm man enough to admit, I think we made a mistake, and I wanna make sure we spend our $3 million in a proper manner, and we get the most money for our buck.
I, I don't think it was a mistake, I think that it was a good try, it just, it, we, we missed.
And there's no, and there's no information?
We tried. Do we know what the borings are gonna cost? I, I was led to believe, I think earlier, that we have an idea. How do we know that?
The gentleman who did the ones at the North Hadley site just gave us a projection in one of our meetings of what it would cost.
To the finance committee? Do you have $5,000 available, should it be necessary to allocate for this project?
Yes, we do.
How do you call that unforeseen?
Excuse me, last?
Finance committee, how do you call that unforeseen request? When they, when they, a year ago, they asked for that same site, and you're gonna, you're gonna give them money out of reserve fund?
John, that's not, that's really not relevant, of course, it's unforeseen because it's available.
It's unforeseen, because it's, it's coming up now, so that's unforeseen.
I think that's a legal decision that happened to be made by our town council.
Sure, yeah.
Can I just say one other thing? It sounds like, I, I understand there's a lot of discussion, you're getting a lot of questions. The phone never rings at the fire station, and I would be happy for folks to call or to come in and sit down and talk about it. If anybody has concerns about what's going on in the fire department and what we're up against, I'm there a lot, obviously. So, you know, feel free to...
Yeah.
I, I got your email, and you're more than welcome anytime, but...
I'd just be a little careful. We don't want everybody calling you about this kind of thing either.
He has Mason's number.
I've got my Mason's on, yeah.
The ghost of dispatch.
I think the thing that you're trying to say is that we need to have daytime coverage, and the daytime coverage isn't the same as it was years ago when you rang the bell and everybody went to the fire. You have to have trained personnel on staff or trained on-call people to go to these fires, it's state mandated now.
Again, well, again, last night at 8:30, somebody on your board actually called 911, because we had a car fire last night.
I'm so sorry. That's so bad.
But, but again, so that's at night, so stuff, help happens a lot at night, too, and that's why I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, the engine tube came down from north, so there was somebody who was available to pick up that truck and come down and help. So, it's, again, and George hit the nail on the head with everything he said, that, and Myron has said the same thing. I think people get confused about what happens at a fire. I can tell you the last two fires, I've been the guy taking the hydrant and then trying to establish command. And we're not getting, mutual aid is coming, but it takes time. I mean, North Hampton took over 12 minutes to get to Frost Lane, and, you know, Amherst took just as long. So, it takes time to rally all those troops as well. So, they're coming, but when you're talking about somebody trapped in the building and the way construction is now, we need that truck getting there quickly.
Yeah, and Mr. Jarvis, I'm concerned.
You know, with old structures, Mike, you know, it was, if the call came in right away, and you were lucky enough to save the old structure, you looked like a hero. If there was flames coming out of every window, then what are you guys doing, saving cellar holes? You know, we've, we've heard it all over the past 13 years.
And I think, over time, I mean, I, yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I'm the one that was pushing down this path, but again, I just wanted to have a discussion with everybody in the room, so everybody had the opportunity to chime in on this. And, you know, I mean, I, I think I've heard enough that I can articulate now the reason for the substation, regardless of whether or not we move to, as George pointed out, what we're calling a full-time force, but it's still not a fully-built-out fire force. And I think that's a very important distinction, and that can be explained to people.
Madam Chair, can I make one last comment about how things have changed? Years ago, we probably had four to five employees on the highway department. A fire alarm went off, they were allowed to leave, whatever they're doing, go grab that fire truck. Today, I think we're down to one, and he's retiring at the end of December. So, we're gonna have zero.
Do you have any questions?
And that's just how things have changed over the years.
Okay, so I think we're ready to move then to the question at hand, which is, does the board want to support moving forward with the boring, or having borings made on the Hynoski property?
Well, yeah, but are you going to, should that be the right?
Schedule a public hearing for, for purchasing of property.
I took that on, took the liberty of scheduling you a public hearing for July 12th.
Three weeks.
Yeah, I meant your next meeting.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion, I make a motion for...
Sure. So, isn't the motion then for the moving forward with the borings?
Moving forward with the borings, and to ask the finance committee at their next meeting to approve the money from the reserve fund to do the test borings.
Second, excuse me.
This is for discussion?
Yeah, no. No, yes, yes.
Because I, something just ran across my mind again.
Go ahead, yeah.
Seeing we're talking about borings, and it's gonna be a site for the fire station, is there any possibility of getting money out of the present budget for the fire station?
David, can you answer that?
For the, the borrowing at the 2.9?
Yes.
No, that's, that money is tied specifically to that site where it is now.
To the plans. Good question. Good question. Okay, so before we vote, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the chief, you're talking, Donald, about a full-time department, 24/7. What will that consist of, chief? How many personnel for 24/7 to take care of this town full-time?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of, that's a loaded question, because there's a lot of different ways you could run the shifts. So, we were looking at a four-on, four-off schedule, four days on, four days off, not four people on. So, that, that was four firefighters, and then they rotate, that would fill in with call force people. You're probably looking at, if you were gonna run that type, three shifts and do them out, so 16?
I thought you said 16.
16, so you're gonna go from a $300,000 budget to almost a million dollar budget.
No, no, that's not on the table right now.
1.6 million you had with 16 people at one time is what you presented to us, I believe.
That, that's another discussion for another day, and just have you, what we needed to talk about relative to this. So, motion made in second, David? All in favor?
You got permission from the landowner to bore?
So, David, next steps, please.
You have the, the right of, of, the town has, shall have the right at reasonable times and reasonable notice entered upon the land for the purpose of surveying, inspecting the land, including, but not limited to soil testing.
Okay, so, so again, just to be clear, from a communications standpoint, so everybody knows what's going on. So, we just took the vote, the finance committee's meeting tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Will you be able to take action on this tomorrow night?
Presumably, yes.
Yes, okay.
There is an agenda item for it.
Okay, and so then, once the outcome of that is known, assuming, let's just fast-forward and assume it's a positive outcome, then what are the actual next steps in terms of having the borings happen?
Just notify the landowner that we're gonna have the, the borings done, and notify the landowner that you're gonna hold your public hearing.
Okay, and you would be taking that action?
Yep.
On both fronts?
Wouldn't we want to also have the architect survey the site with us, and the geotech guy to make sure? I know that he did it, I'm saying to make sure we choose the right site for the fire station out of the 11 acres.
Who's the architect?
So, do that simultaneously, as you're saying? That's, I was going to...
Isn't that only gonna cost $5,000? They're throwing numbers around, we kinda got in trouble before. I mean, somebody should talk to the architect and say, what's it gonna cost for you to come out, because it's a different project.
He already did it, didn't he?
Well, they just said, oh, the guy said $5,000, but that's not the architect.
Boring geologist.
But that's...
Madam Chairman, who's the architect you're talking about?
Hang, hang on a second. So, so I'm just talking to the, the folks on the sub, the fire station subcommittee right now. So, the next step from your standpoint then would be to, if in fact, you wanna determine whether or not this is truly feasible, right? And that would mean that the architect would then be looking at that parcel to determine what a possible site layout would be?
Correct.
Is that, I just wanted to make sure I know what's being asked, right?
Correct.
And so, where do we stand with the OPM and the architect, David? Because the project was put on hold.
So, right now, the, the project is on hold. The money for the OPM and for the architect is tied specifically to that site, but the municipal building committee has an on-call consultant, which if we have some money there, we can use that as a reas, yes.
Is there any money in the budget?
No.
Just a question.
Jesus, we get it, that's the second time I thought we were gonna have to give him CPR.
About $46 left in postage, I'd be happy to...
Is it ridiculous to ask our architect to redo the property anyways?
What do you mean?
The current architect, we had no cost to ask him to look at that property.
We'll have to check with the, the...
How about the OPM, I mean?
Yeah, the OPM, I, I think we can.
The non-architect.
Okay.
Can you just ask him?
Yeah, I can do that, and I can pay for him out of the OPM article that's not associated with this, with this property.
Okay, so, okay, so, again, so you're gonna notify the owner, and...
The geotech guy who does the borings?
Yep.
Yep, and then, you're going to talk to...
Set up a public hearing.
Yeah, and then you're gonna talk to Mr. Palumbo?
Yep.
Right? And then with the intent being that he would figure out next steps in terms of the site.
Should he be working which entity?
Yeah, and that's, does he work with the fire substation group, or?
Well, like I said, the, the geotech person sent Phil Palumbo some really good data and information on that site, and has already circled an area where he felt...
To answer what I was heading, this has already been done. It's not the architect, the OPM.
So, if the OPM can get on the same page with the geotech person, then I think it might be an easy, it might be an easy look to see what's going on.
So, who am I coordinating with? Is it municipal building committee or the fire substation committee?
Both, we can't use any of the funding out of ours, I would say.
I'm talking about coordination in terms of what you need.
Yeah, I think, I think both, municipal and the...
So, maybe there could be a, a point person, whether it's the chairs or whatever, from each committee, just so, again, we wanna make sure the communication's clear and timely, so that people aren't wondering.
Yeah, we're gonna have to move quickly on this in order to meet tolerances in the law.
Right, so, or, or, you know, to go through the, the select board representatives, too, so whether you use Joyce and Donald as points, and, and...
And Johnny being the point person, he's gone through all the paperwork for the fire station over there, and it's gonna be basically the same as what's...
Well, I, I think the, the main thing is to make sure that the information gets, as a point person, to let the committees know what's going on, so get the information out, so people that, you know, I mean, use email, whatever means necessary.
Johnny, 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 and he'll tell me.
Well, I'll hear from David.
Yeah.
Now, has the building needs committee, you said earlier on, you met and you voted that this would be a good project, or no?
We did that a year ago.
Okay, so we're going back with that?
We just did it again.
So, it's possible for somebody from the building and needs committee to go to the finance committee meeting tomorrow, too, and express yourself?
I think they heard it tonight.
But I think that they know.
Is it not clear?
Amy and Tom, you're there.
But then, you have the other members, you have four other members.
And then Gabriel was here for part of it, too, before he left.
Okay, all right, the point, let's just make sure everybody knows what's going on, however we manage that.
So, on Friday, after your decision?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, David'll know, so Friday, he can start what he needs to do.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, so is everybody, everybody good?
Everybody's good.
Everybody's good?
Move on.
John, we're moving on to this topic, so do you have something else? Or not?
I wanna know, why did Dave Lechon authorize the OPM to stop the project?
Because he discussed it with the select board.
Did they, did they formally vote on that?
We had a discussion about it, and we told them to go ahead. So, we're moving on to these...
Was there a vote, I asked?
No vote.
There's no vote. I said, we had a discussion, and we...
He said, she said.
No, we all collectively, is there anybody here who believes that we did not tell David?
The whole problem was that...
Next.
He, he never called me and told me that.
No, we're, we're done. So, we're moving on to the senior center update and the senior tax workoff program.
Okay, senior center building committee, met this afternoon, as we all know, our first building that we've designed came in over budget by between 1.2 and 1.8 million dollars. So, with the architect, too, it's in the contract, will design a second building within the same cost frame, is, has worked on a 9,500-square-foot building for us. We do not have the costs on that building, because we're waiting for the new soil tests to happen before it goes to the estimators. Those tests are being done on Monday and Tuesday, and we should have a report back within two weeks, then it goes to the estimators, so in a month, we will have the cost back for the 9,500-square-feet foot building. At our meeting today, we talked about the fact that members of the committee are hearing two different things, well, three different things. When are you gonna open it, when are you breaking ground? But the other is, build it right the first time, and the third is, you mean we have to pay more. So, we're here to ask the, I'm here on behalf of the committee to ask the, uh, select board to schedule a special town meeting the first week of August, so that we will have a sense of what the town wants to do, so that we'll have our numbers and we can go forward one way or the other.
So, in addition, as part of the committee, um, the numbers from the revised, um, revisions that were done today, and it was an extensive amount of revisions, not simply a shrinking of the building, but there was other things like parking lot spaces being taken away, accesses off of Route nine, um, cutbacks on, you know, there was a seventy-two thousand dollar budget for, uh, uh, flowers and landscaping to be done. We thought that that was a ridiculously high number. So, we went through and trimmed up everything that we could today to still provide a building that is something that the town of Habley would be proud of. So, nothing was made to changes other than what we thought was things that could be put off at this point in time. So, as Jane had said, that in a month, we should have the result of what we did today. Uh, and we won't know until the, the, uh, two weeks from the bore samples as to whether or not the building can go and how it can go. If it can go where we'd like it to go, and we cut back on the amount of spaces and we can, uh, take care of the water above ground rather than having a sub-ground system, it saves a quarter of a million dollars. So, those are the kinds of things that we were looking at today to get done. We hope the number will come in on the budget line, we're not exactly sure, we won't be sure until it actually comes before us next time. We were a little perplexed with how, how high it was this time, but, you know, we did everything in our power to do it. They did a great job going out researching the facilities that were available, being built at that time. Uh, the number came in higher than what those facilities were, but nothing's going down. In an effort to try to tweak this up, to come in on budget, there's a second plan is, let's come in at a ninety-five hundred square foot building and make the necessary cuts, hopefully it comes in on budget. But as Jane had said, that there's a lot of taxpayers out there that are concerned, and I think the buildings committee and other people as well, that are saying, listen, you came up with a, a twelve thousand square foot building, you came up with that for a reason, the amount of changes that's being made to it, if it's gonna cannibalize and make the project smaller, and we think more seniors are gonna be using the facilities, not less, and we think parking's important, and we want the water to be taken care of below soil, and we want the exterior to look the best it can, maybe, you know, I'm a vinyl siding guy, but, you know, so we changed that to vinyl siding on the exterior, because I know what it costs to paint buildings, and in the future I don't wanna paint another building in town. So, they want the taxpayers to have the opportunity to step up to the plate and after, it's been thoroughly vetted and explained why the cost is what the cost is, to let the taxpayers say, we support this or we support that.
Yeah, the question, I know, when I left the forum, I was really disappointed when I heard twelve thousand square feet getting cut to eight. I feel a lot better hearing ninety-five, but I would like to hear a little more for the future, you know? I, I would like you to build a quality building, and I'll go on record saying that, and I'm one of the people out there yelling, I wanna build for the future. I don't wanna build a building that's gonna be obsolete when we move in it, you know, and.
And that's why we would like to pay it to the taxpayers, cause they ultimately will have to pay.
Eight thousand comes in on budget, it's not the building we need.
No.
No, it doesn't.
Now, you're saying SM four looking at that now would save you a quarter million dollars?
No, no.
Or have you looked at that angle?
No.
How it's gonna affect the building?
Now, I don't think it's gonna affect this one, we're still gonna have to mitigate the groundwater. Whether we mitigate it underneath or whether we're able to be retention ponds above ground, we have to mitigate the water because a lot of blacktop is gonna show up and a lot of roof space where it wasn't before, we have to mitigate the water. That doesn't go away, no matter what, we still have to take care of the water.
One of the things that came up in the, in the senior center building committee was the fact that the site work, just like the North Habley substation, came in way over, and I think that is one of the things you're having to deal with, is the, you know, the groundwater. And it, the, the part of do it right the first time is like, that's what it's gonna take. You've already got all these retention ponds all over town, and to do it right, and according to the, the way the, you know, this region of the United States wants it, you have to filter that water properly and, and make it go in the right direction. And if you don't spend that money on the site work right the first time, you know, I, I think it's the right thing to, to go back to the town and say, look, the OPM was more toward right with his, his first number, and the fact that we, we tried to get it less number for you, well, we, we did what we could to try to lower the cost of this particular structure, but we wanna do it right, and we, you know, we just can't do it in this particular.
You know, in the past, the retention ponds worked nice, but as you see more and more in town now, the underground is going into leach and basins, and the groundwater's going away, and you're getting rid of health risks also, also with the mosquitoes and the bugs and everything else.
And it just looks nice.
And maintaining that, yes. I mean, the, uh, US Fish and Wildlife building came to us, they, they were digging out their pond already, cause they let it go, they didn't maintain it properly. The one over on Venture Way is the same thing, it's, it's growing out of control right now.
That's been an issue and.
It's gonna be a major operation to get that thing cleaned up and operated properly.
It's nice to have the rules that, that, that you can actually do retention pond like that. But just because it's right by the numbers doesn't mean it's right.
Yeah.
For, you know, this side of the United States, you really have to clean up this groundwater, and it, it needs to be done right.
So, can I, um, just ask a question, just trying to understand, I, I understand what you're asking for, but procedurally, David, a special town meeting, if it were to happen the first week of August, can you just talk about the notice and all this stuff passing?
Yeah, so, uh, it would be a one, one or maybe two articles, special town meeting, you would have to sign the warrant at your next meeting on July twelfth. You'd have to post on the thirteenth in order to have a special town meeting on, uh, August third, Thursday.
Is there some magic about that date?
It's only that we will have our numbers back by that time, and we can talk about which way we're going, so that we can continue forward.
But we would have to get the warrant to town council and, and all of that stuff.
Well, I think you're also gonna have to, um, have prepared, uh, how much of an increase you want, what it's gonna cost to the taxpayer per quarter.
Right, yes, well, we have to do all of that, this is.
So, I mean, you know, just for people to say, okay, we're gonna do another, um, debt exclusion, you know, that's gonna be.
Two-thirds vote, you understand?
Do we wanna have a town meeting and then two months later have another town meeting?
That's, that's a proposal.
Cause it's twenty-five hundred dollars minimum, right, to hold a town meeting?
Yeah, something like that.
And again, you could have cost everyone so far outweighed the cost of the, what you're.
Do you think we'll be prepared for the, do you think we'll be prepared for the fire substation at that time? Cause it would be, I think the point you're trying to make is, you want it specifically for one or two articles, David, I think you just said?
Yeah.
So, the people can concentrate just on those two articles, not thirty articles that they're gonna get bored with, and everything's gonna pass, or everything's not gonna pass. You know, I think we spend so much time on, on these two projects, that if it costs us twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe that's not a bad investment at this point.
And we're gonna know the library?
Yeah.
The grant application?
In July.
In July, David?
So, I guess I return to the chair's question, is what is the magic number for, why, why August? If you can wait another two months and you're in October.
Well, it has to do with things like the difference you got in bids for paving the parking lot here. From the time you actually got an estimate from Warner Brothers about what it might cost and what the bids came into, things are going up, and they seem to be going up quickly, and that was one of our problems with costs, with the building, that it's not getting slower, and the sooner we move forward, the more money the town will ultimately save.
And with the roofs?
We came back three times because they went out to bid, and three times, and we went to town meeting three times. They request more and more money, we're trying to, to not do that.
Yeah, and maybe we could take advantage of a meeting like that, and again, a focused meeting.
To isolate it, just.
Isolate some of these building issues, and then maybe even use it for a referendum, John? I know you like the referendum questions.
Or maybe you could talk about the Einowski property.
When you look at it, October fifth isn't that far away, we're gonna miss the construction season anyways.
I, I think the focused business, especially where you have seniors involved, and they don't wanna sit all night waiting for an article to come up.
Let me guess, it's gonna be a Saturday town meeting?
Really?
No, I'm just.
No, I don't think that would happen.
I'm posing that cause it's senior.
Ask John, would you?
No, listen, I get into that conversation.
If we wait until October, and if we have our numbers in August, and we know which way, which building we can afford, we have no idea which way the town feels about it, in terms of financing it or not. And that stops everything, including doing the design information to keep it moving forward, and it really sets it back.
John?
Yeah, who's putting the numbers together? Is the architect and the estimator doing it?
We, the town, we have an estimator and the architect.
Two estimators.
An estimator, and they get together and they beat heads, and we listen to them.
So, my question is, why was I stopped to get those numbers, what they're trying to do, to go to a town meeting? Cause that's what we need, and we're stopped doing it.
We're, we're not talking about the fire station anymore.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I can kinda go either way, I'm listening, I mean, I mean.
Let's, let's, let's just talk about the two town meetings.
They threatened me today that they were gonna go get the signatures.
It was, it was, they were laughing when they said it, they were laughing, they were laughing when they said it.
But that could have an adverse effect too.
Course it could, that's why I said they were laughing when they said it.
It could work both ways.
David, you wanna help encapsulate this discussion for us?
So, if, if you're gonna have a, a August town meeting, which is likely to, uh, result in some sort of debt exclusion, uh, then you're gonna have two months after that, another town meeting, which is also likely to involve debt exclusion. You know, do you want to, do you, how, how do you wanna handle that debt exclusion so that the taxpayers don't feel like they're being asked continuously for, for additional spending above the levy limit?
No, no, that's right, you can put it all in one bucket and say, this much, or for the senior center, and possibly the land or something else, it's gonna be this much. And then later on, okay, in addition to that, you gotta do this. And it's my belief that there is time between an early August town meeting, special town meeting, and a ballot question before the actual fall town meeting happens.
Right, do a petition.
So, it would be all out of the way.
Well, the, the cost is what, I mean, it's, I'm not, it, it does cost money.
Costs money.
Town meeting's not twenty-five hundred dollars, it's the, it's the ballot question that's twenty-five hundred, right?
Twenty-five hundred, correct.
No.
Yeah, you gotta pay the poll workers, constable.
You still have to have registrars at your town meeting.
Yeah, the only comment I wanna make about this whole discussion is, there are.
John, John, stop.
There are people in town that wanna know the whole picture, they don't want this piecemeal stuff going on, because they're gonna spend a little more here, and then next month we're gonna be asking for a little more there. They wanna get to know what's going on with everything, they wanna know in October what they're voting for, that they can plan their taxes or whatever, so.
They already voted for these projects?
They have, but we keep increasing them, with all of these events that keep occurring, and this, these numbers keep going up, and I think what's gonna happen is ultimately, people are just gonna say, no, let's stop, we're not going anywhere. You know, they don't wanna do anything, because we can't sell and come up with a firm number. So, we, we, we need to get all the information.
You know why it happened?
Right, so, I don't know, thoughts from the board?
I prefer to do the one.
That's the way I feel.
John?
Honestly, I.
He abstains.
Go ahead.
You should be a good one, Joyce.
Honestly, I kinda agree with, uh, the senior center and the fire subcommittee, only because when you go to that town meeting, and you know these are the two articles that we're going to be talking about, and, and I'm not, I don't, not that I don't care about the seniors sitting there till eleven o'clock at night for the whole town meeting, but if they concentrate on the two articles that they're, they, they have in front of us.
Plus the land.
Well, yeah, if, if we put both of the properties together, because of the overrides on both of them, and keep them separate from the town meeting, I, I don't have a problem with, with having to. You, the other question I had was, do you think that town meeting and that override could be funded by the two committees?
We don't have money to pay for the buildings, John.
No, I know, but you, you would, so you add that into it, the, these are the loose ends that David's talking about, that you could add in and, and hold this for.
Um, just before, can I ask, um, for the representatives from the NBC that are here tonight, would it be beneficial, for, for, I mean, forget the part, you know, personal opinion aside here for a sec, but from a committee's standpoint, would it be beneficial in any way for your committee to have the will of town meeting known earlier than October on these projects? Does it impact you in any way, one way or the other?
I don't think it really does, I don't think so. It's two months, I mean, we don't.
No, I'm, I'm just, a massive question, massive question.
I, I don't think it would matter either way.
Escalating.
Yeah, I was just curious if, say, the library, um, bid comes back and they don't grant, they, we don't receive the grant. Is it possible to then get a library also on for August, or would have to be in October to reconsider what to do with the library site? And that relates to his question, because I too am concerned about the piecemeal nature of this. If, let's say, uh, let's say something happens with the August town meeting, we get a new senior center, then the seniors may come back in October and vote against any new library.
What?
So, it, it just, I'm concerned about, you ask for a two and a half override, you ask for another one, and then another one. Certainly at a certain point, people say, too much on our taxes, we're gonna just stay with these buildings for now, and there ought to be some sort of.
Yeah, inertia central.
Overall, so there is inertia exactly associated with them, so that's why my question is, could we get the library on in August if July comes back?
Probably, because we would have to have the warrant.
The warrant would have to have been, you know, closed and approved at that point, and, and until there's a yea or a nay on the vote, you're not, you're not gonna know, so.
John's vote was two?
Uh, two meeting, two of them?
One in August?
Yeah.
Mine's for August.
Okay, um, Jane?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, no, I'm just looking, I got people to hand some here.
I'm asking the question of whether there was money in the building committee fund, no, but there was twenty-five hundred dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars left over in both the fire station and the building committee from the original money that was, uh, or, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand dollars total, from the money that was funded for the OPM originally, before he went on contract.
John?
No, we're going not for us, we're going for additional funding, whether it's senior center and we. If we don't get it, we're going back, this is what I wanted to do, is to say, the architect, here's plan A with everything, here's plan B with the money we got. What's your pleasure? And I think they sit in the same boat, we don't, and, and the whole problem with this boat we're sitting in, when we started, we had, they had zero for a budget, we had zero. We should have hired the architect like the library did, an estimator, they wouldn't have been in trouble, and neither would we be in trouble. We're trying to do things, and that was, it was a guesstimate they gave and a guesstimate we gave, not a estimate, so.
I know, but there are also potential variables.
We, we still can do it now, now that we made that mistake, we can go back to the architect, to the, to the estimator, and go, go back to that town meeting, and they can present theirs, and we can present ours.
Okay, is John speaking on behalf of your committee, have you discussed this, or?
He's speaking as an individual, I think.
Yeah.
John, do you feel that a separate town meeting for these two buildings should be set, so everybody can discuss just these two articles?
Absolutely, I agree with him a hundred percent.
Then I, I'll make a motion to have is the special town meeting in August specifically for the senior center and the fire substation.
And land.
And.
Well, and, and we don't, we, really what we're voting for tonight is to have a special town meeting in August, because there may be some, if in fact that we move forward with that, there may be some other things that we would wanna get done if we go that way.
Second.
No.
Vote, man. We can do it all in one meeting.
Hang on, John, John's clarifying, what?
No, I, I specifically said the senior center and the fire substation.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying.
And not the land.
Well, you can ask him.
Maybe part of us.
I, I think we would.
Or we're gonna fire station.
The land.
Right.
The fire substation and new proposed property.
David?
So, the motion should be to call the special town meeting, the selectmen, when you close your warrant, you decide what is on your warrant.
Yeah.
Um, you may find a real, there may be a real reason not to specify at this time what it is that you're putting on the warrant.
You know, I'm having a real tough time with this, because we don't even know what's gonna transpire in the fall with two eighteen, if we even got enough money to fund two eighteen.
Yes, but nothing to.
It does too, everything's gonna have to be tied together to pay for this. Wishful thinking, if you, you're gonna support an override, forget it, you told me, the last two weeks you can't afford anything anymore.
So, 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 yeah, um, so, so is motion made and seconded, I guess, you know, one further thought I'd have is that. I agree with the points that. I agree with the points that Matt made and Donald's making right now in terms of you taking a chunk of it out of the whole financial picture. But the other problem I'm having is it's also kind of forcing us to bring more of the financial picture to the town because why on earth would you vote for this in August if you didn't have a better sense? Not that we're not really good at getting our act together in a timely manner.
I don't know, okay.
You know, we haven't got any numbers back from the school, they're coming back July twelfth. Their numbers are gonna be scary, when you hear them, it's gonna be unbelievable. I've been in some of their meetings with them, listen, this discussion.
Yeah, I'm fully expecting that, I agree with you, Donald. So, but again, you know, it's an order of magnitude too, we're talking about capital borrowing, we're talking about it being done over twenty-five, whatever, whatever we write it off over.
I just, like I said, I just, I'm in a motion because I feel a short meeting about two specific issues or however many is gonna be a lot easier than eighteen articles.
We have a back-to-back in October. You know, have one day exclusively for all these things, and then the following day have for everything else.
And that includes support, that's doubling the cost for nothing.
Well, we're doubling the cost now by having a special town meeting.
That's for nothing, you're doubling the cost for nothing, if you can do them all one night, then I'd rather do it that night, I'm trying to get this right.
Unless you bring a whole bunch of stuff in front of everybody.
Tom?
What's the actual deadline if you were gonna have an August second town meeting, David? When would the warrant have to be signed and closed?
You need to post it two weeks in advance.
That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Because we already have a countdown to the October one, now we're gonna have to have an accelerated countdown.
It's a special, so you don't, it's not the same as a fall.
I just wanna make sure that it's even possible.
Yeah, so, no later than, say, July twentieth, you'd have to be posting in order to have a August third meeting.
August third is on what night?
July twentieth would be your posting date for an August third meeting.
Thursday.
When is your next selectman's meeting?
July twelfth.
So if you have a little expectation on you, you better do that.
Happy birthday.
Okay, so everybody ready to vote on this? Okay, so is motion made and seconded to move forward with a special town meeting first week of August? With the intent being that it's targeted to these building initiatives, but again, the select board will open and close the warrant on that. Okay, ready, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Balla post?
No.
Obstain.
Oh, you can't say anything to John. All right, so the vote is three, one, and zero. Okay, but if we're gonna, yeah, and I'm really not, it's not, it's extremely uncomfortable, if you put it that way.
You're holding a nose.
Yeah, I'm definitely holding my nose on this one.
Will the petition convince you?
Well, you just voted, so.
Well, you're gonna-
Is that three up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A petition wouldn't make a difference.
But I do, I think we need to respect town meeting, and we need to do everything we can to get as much information in front of town meeting as possible at this meeting.
Get as much information as we can.
Yeah, and so, you know, we've been talking about having a public hearing in advance of the fall town meeting anyway. Maybe this is an opportunity to make some sort of presentation to the town on where we're at with the budgets, and especially if the schools are gonna have a big ask, we might wanna, we wanna make sure all of the information is on the floor when people make these votes on the buildings.
No, we ain't going for an override, I can tell you that right now.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah, what?
Is our architect open now again? Is it still on hold?
Still on hold.
Can we?
No, it's still, no, no.
We can't get no more information?
David, we're, we're-
Yeah, so you get one, you get under the contract, you get one free redo for the architect for the fire substation. We don't know where the fire substation is going at this point.
Why is the senior center doing it? Is they're still on the same site?
Yeah, they're not moving around.
Right.
We're on scene, we're still on the same site. It don't make a difference where it is going.
Whatever you guys wanna do, I'll do, but right now, I don't know where the fire substation is gonna go. You have a real opportunity to force the architect to double charge you for a design.
It's a change in site.
I recommend that you put it on hold while I let it clarify.
Yep, and we also haven't done the appointments for the committees yet either, so we still have that coming up on the agenda. So, need to see who's gonna be involved in this.
So if we can get the new site worked on, then by August, we should have no problem putting that building on a new site.
Let's just move along here.
Yeah, so I think we're all set, so question asked, questions answered. We'll be having more discussion about it. Senior tax workup program on the agenda?
Was this Cookie Gunner?
Want me to speak to it?
Did you get this from somewhere?
Did I get this?
Did you draft this, or did you?
No, no.
Very good.
Actually, David's done a ton of work on it, and I reviewed and made recommendations based on the Economic Elder Index to try and come up with qualifying income guidelines and some of the best practices from other places to get a sense of how it would work best. I guess what we're looking at tonight is, I'm hearing that most, in most of the places where these are implemented, it starts off slowly. So rather than having something too big to handle, we thought proposing five slots at five hundred dollars each to start off the program would be a nice, you know, kind of segue into the whole program while while we get the whole administrative pieces of it together and see how it works so that we can really get a handle on it.
Be happy with the numbers as far as the income limits?
Yeah, I am, only because I looked at, like I said, specific to this area, what seniors are supposed to be able to pay for housing, transportation, meals, healthcare, and nothing above that. In other words, these people aren't taking vacations, but they're just meeting what they need to stay in their homes, keep themselves happy and healthy in their hometown. So those, those people and anybody underneath are really the ones who we're trying to target to benefit them, to kind of up their quality of life a little bit while the costs of inflation keep going up, and they're just barely making it without having to choose between medicine and, you know, food. Exactly, exactly. So, so those numbers were where I got it from, specific to Hampshire County.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
I just have one question.
Yes.
How are you going to interview the people? Who's gonna do that?
So applications are filled out by them, and on the applications, it says what their skills are. And they'll have an opportunity to say which department they'd like to be placed in, even though it's not a done deal that they will be. They'll have to be somebody who actually vets them, getting the income qualifications, query check, all those things before they can be slid in. They'll also be trying to, those applications will be matched with department head job descriptions that they are looking to have filled by these.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that guidance, and we'll come, we'll take that information, we'll develop the final program and bring it back for your approval.
Okay, all right, town hall paving project?
We received four bids. And the low bidder, the apparent low bidder is Cassidy Corporation out of Woburn for a price of forty thousand six eighty-nine. We checked their references, they've all come back very positive. So I recommend that the select board award the bid to Cassidy Corporation of Woburn subject to the availability of funding, and just recall that the church is gonna provide half the funding.
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so annual appointments.
I was just gonna ask David why, I have no idea.
Gold or silver?
It's almost double the project, Warner, but it's-
But three of them were pretty close.
Yeah, they're three, we're very close.
I don't see where this is coming from.
I know, yeah.
Out of sight.
Okay, annual appointments, so town officials, board, and committee members. So we have an appointment letter from the fire department, listing the fire personnel, and then we have a select board appointments basically listing everybody else, as far as I can tell.
So moved on the fire department?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for fire personnel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then on the select board list, we have town officials and committees, so this includes accountant, oh, so it's actually the town personnel as well, so the accountant that's outsourced, town administrator, I'm not gonna go through all of this.
Why would it be the administrator when he's under contract? I don't think he should be on there.
It doesn't matter if it's on there or not, it's for the sake of the lateness of the hour.
Okay, so moved, lateness of the hour.
Okay, so there's a motion moved, does somebody want a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay, so, let's see, where we have Conservation Council on Asian Capital Planning, Municipal Planning, Shade Tree Media Historical Commission, Water and Sewer Commission. What about the subcommittees, David?
I don't see them on there.
Don't either.
Bring it back for the, for the select board to appoint. So bring it back.
So, we're not voting on what we see in front of us right now?
I think you should vote right now on this, but then the subcommittees, we can bring it back.
Okay.
Okay, let's bring it back at the next meeting, okay?
So motion to accept what's in front of us for tonight?
Yep, motion made and seconded? I'm sorry, is there a second?
There is a second for discussion, we did that. This list has been checked and verified, and these people are all, or these are just-
That's what I'm a little worried about right now.
Yeah. Someone called me, someone, we've actually got letters from, but I see, like, Edwin Matous goes on two different committees?
Yeah, and he actually is, yep.
Yeah, and he's not, I only see him in one spot here.
Yeah, you're right, I don't see him.
Do we vote for ourselves?
Yes.
Yeah, I know it's crazy law.
But the CPA's not on here.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
And then the conservation, yes.
Yeah, Edwin should be on conservation.
He's on conservation, then he's-
And he's on CPA.
He is, okay. And then Andy Morse-Friedman's on here, because we had heard from him. But David, I thought that this had to be done before July one. Not subcommittees?
It's best that we do, so I would say take your vote right now, I'll find out why this is not a complete list.
Right, but then, so, can we still alter the subcommittees if we choose to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so. Last agenda item, I think, is the employee evaluations. Okay, so, last year we had the select board worked with, or requested that the building inspector.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I was just about to talk about you, sorry. That the building inspector, the fire chief, police chief, town administrator, and DPW director put forth goals and objectives for the year, recognizing that at the end of the fiscal year, we would then be doing performance evaluations. So, well, this is on the agenda tonight to talk about a process that we want to follow for that, because I know, like, Marlo had called, and he was, he didn't even realize that they're done an open session and that kind of thing. But I think in the past, what we've tried to do with, at least with David, is we've asked, and actually, I think the two chiefs as well, we asked them to do a self-evaluation first, get that to us in advance of the actual performance review, so we had that kind of quite frankly, it's an opportunity for the individuals to remind us of all of the other things that they may have done, if some of the goals haven't been met and the like, so do that first.
Kind of like David's administration report, some kind of ongoing report from them once a month, or once every couple of months?
But we should, we should start the process now before the performance reviews are done, and then, you know, so ask them to do that in maybe one week in advance of the actual scheduled date. I know Marlo has said, because of his vacation time in July, he's volunteered to have his done at the first meeting in July, which would be the twelfth. But then, each select board member should really be, like we do with David, have an evaluation sheet that we work off of when we do the review. So, how do people feel about that?
I feel that would be fine if we can do a list of previous year's goals and objectives, and then a listing from individual personnel as to how they feel they did, and then we can sit and talk about it.
Okay, and then similar to David, when we do the evaluation, we're also gonna want to, I mean, their goals aren't the totality of what they do. So we wanna make sure that we're addressing the scope, the full scope of their work.
Sounds good.
Could we create a performance sheet to give to these department heads?
To give to them?
Yeah, and then have them give them back to us for us to analyze them, and then they come in for their view.
For their self-evals.
Right, but Donald's saying, formalize it, so that we actually give them the format to do that in. Would you find that helpful, at being one of the alleged, you know, victims subject to this process?
Just a little bit of guidance, which is, look, it would be great.
Yep, well, I mean, obviously, the main thing, if you do a self-review, you're going to-
I'd stay below, below radar with you guys.
Oh, you haven't done, you haven't done this before?
I've never done it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking that, and I was like, well, would you do that?
I've never done it, it'll be the first.
Okay.
There are standard forms out there, right?
Yep.
That's what I'm just saying, one of those, a standard form.
Well, it might, since, since this is a new experience, it might be best if instead of using a standard form, that we allow him to provide a narrative which gives him an ability to touch the goals and objectives he had last year. With a standard form, you can sometimes have that mismatch, okay, so what he laid out for himself last year may not be on the standard form. So. I think the flexibility here is helpful.
Okay, so then, next steps, then, are we comfortable with getting Marlo on for the twelfth? And then in advance of that, because I think he's already been working on something anyway.
Yeah.
And then, can you coordinate with the two chiefs and Tim?
Yeah.
And yourself?
Yeah.
And ask yourself when you're gonna be here and when you're not, and all that good stuff?
I know when I'm gonna be here.
Okay.
He already sent out that memo today.
Yeah, no, I'm just teasing, so, obviously, we wanna work on vacations in the summer. Okay, and then we'll get, like I'm about to say, here's what, so are people okay with me working with David on that to get that up?
What does the twelfth's agenda look like now?
Twelfth's agenda.
Terrible.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah.
You got three weeks to rest.
Never have enough rest, until they put me in the grave.
We can always schedule another meeting between now.
So you start out with a tri-board. We've got a public hearing on the Hynoski property, got the updates fire and senior center, sewer impact fee discussion, some fee adjustments, bids for electrical and plumbing and gas, special town meeting for August third, DPW goals and objectives, and then we had those standing issues that we raised at the last select board meeting. So that's a full night.
So right now in July, we're scheduled on-
We're gonna pick that up too, right?
Yeah, subcommittees.
Awesome.
So on the, in July right now, we're scheduled the twelfth and the twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm, because David's on vacation, the other two.
David's on vacation the first week, I'm on vacation the
He is too.
Third week, yep.
He is too.
Both of us are, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, is everybody okay holding another, we're not gonna meet for three weeks?
Sounds good to me.
Sure, normally you're asking for additional meetings, I'm just giving you the opportunity.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, everybody comfortable with that schedule?
We need one. Schedule.
We need one, schedule.
John will be here for you.
Well, I mean, I do think we need one, but I don't know.
Listen, I plan my vacation around these places, because I can't miss them.
I, I hear ya.
Okay, everybody's comfortable with the schedule?
Yes.
Anything else tonight? Well, there's a number of other questions.
Are you sure? Are you absolutely sure?
No, well, I'm not getting answers over here.
Are you positive? What is that?
Okay, so, announcements?
Announcements.
I just have one this evening, uh, like to extend our deepest sympathy to the family of Elaine Gaynor. Um, condolences to her family and friends.
Okay, anything else, any other? No?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, David?
So, I tried to get Susan-
Second to that.
Sorry.
I tried to get Sue Glowatsky to, uh, make this announcement, but she said I should do it. The tax collections have come in better than they ever have before, the amount of outstanding taxes, this is at its lowest at sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Wow.
As of today, so-
Out of a ten million dollar property tax.
Out of ten million, out of ten million dollars, so.
Thank you, Hadley.
Yeah, there we are, thank you voters.
Yeah, thank you voters, certainly our collectors as well, but-
Your lane, yes. Okay, so it's sixty-eight thousand five hundred now.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.
Night, thanks for coming, thanks for playing.